Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10 colon 4, the Open Public Meetings Act notices this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolan?
Present.
Dr. Campbell?
Present.
Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Canderozi?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak? Thank you.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes, thank you.
No sir, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our resolution, our resolution 12307, we, the resolution granted one year time special administrative committee proposed in line 9.23 to be developed for, rather than state, what we call, that slight provision was required because capital fire district, district two, I did not, secretary, already, regular member.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker? Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chairman, two additional, 202208, resolution granting preliminary final site plan approval of the parents for two story office building, known as Jackson project, that's a will.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker? Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Chairman, last resolution for this evening, 202209, is a resolution granting preliminary final site plan approval, and both barcodes as a design, point store, top line, franchise, pool decks, patio areas, and multi purpose field, including two thicker ball courts, for the Jackson, Jem one, block forty one.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yeah.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for a time extension for a preliminary finder, final major site plan and subdivision, resolution 2019-15 memorialized on January 1st, 2019, granted conditional use and preliminary site plan and subdivision approval, so has established 34 single family residential building lots, one existing lot for an existing dwelling, one storm water management lot, and a multifamily lot for eight apartment units. Based on the provisions of the miscellaneous law, the general terms and conditions would be protected until July 1, 2021. The original application sought a one-year extension that would bring him to July 1, 2022, so I'll leave it to the applicant, but it seems maybe using two-year one extensions to get him to 2023 might be a better way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In 2019, when the application was approved, it was located in the RG2 zone. Property is still located in the RG2 zone, so there have been no zone changes, and as Mr. Clea indicated, they're asking for a final time extension.
Good evening, Ian Goldman, Levin Shea, Fafford Goldman, on behalf of Denton Pines. This is a request for an extension, and without further ado, I'm going to leave it to little Ian to address the technical items.
I do. Certainly. Good evening. Never been called Little Ian before, at least not for many years. Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey, graduate of Rutgers University, 1982, bachelor of science degree, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, had 35 years of experience in the engineering planning field for various companies and government agencies, and have testified in front of many, many lines of boards. Thank you. So, to be brief, yes, thank you, Mr. Peters. As he, as he stated, the property was approved in the RG2 zone, it remains in the RG2 zone. There have been no changes to the zone since the approval in 2019, nor have there been any changes to the project. The project remains exactly the same as approved. The reason for the extent we're seeking the extension is for, we are still continuing to finalize our utility permits, utilities being sewer in particular. This, this property along the White's Road corridor is part of a coordination of the Jackson MUA with various projects on how to provide sewer service and where to locate pump stations and how to tie them together. This project, in fact, there is, I should say, one change to the plans, I should say, in the utility sphere. When approved by the board, we had a pump station. There is no longer a pump station with the project. The, the MUA, through some master plan of their own, identified a better location for a regional pump station that's, that's not located on Denton Pines, so that caused some, some time, but we're, the application was submitted just last week to the DEP, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, for our treatment works approval. We are hopeful of having all of our water and sewer approvals wrapped up, I would think, by July 1st, but for that reason, I believe I heard Mr. Clea say, we did ask for a one-year extension in our application, which would carry it to July 1st of '22. We'd made this application in January. I would have thought that we'd be done with the sewer permitting by now when, in January, but again, these planning delays at the MUA level have, have pushed it back, so I, I would respectfully ask for that second one-year extension while we're here. There, there's no particular single issue, it's just in this case, it's, and every project is different, and it's not, it's not only the MUA that, that we've asked for extensions for. Some cases, it's the county planning board. Every job anymore has different complexities, be it DEP with, with wetlands, or, or pine lands, or sewer, or, or county planning board with road, county roadways. In this case, it's water and sewer, not because of any, it, it basically, as I mentioned, it's master planning by the MUA. They're trying to coordinate different projects. Who builds what and when that is the most efficient, because at the end of the day, regardless of what the developer constructs, it's the MUA that's going to own and operate it. So it's, it's in their best interest to create a system that's the most efficient. In the case of sewer, that means the fewest number of pump stations, and it just, it just takes time to coordinate these things. If this was coordinated, you might be familiar with the Pine Rock project that's farther up by Sill Road that is now under construction. There was coordination with that project and MUA on the Water Main and White's Road, so there's just a lot of little moving parts that just needed time to be worked out by them.
I, I'd just remind the board that the, the requirement for a time extension, the applicant needs to prove to the reasonable satisfaction of the board that they were barred either directly or indirectly from obtaining all necessary approvals. So to the extent that Mr. Borden has explained the MUA delay or dilemma, the board should reconcile that with the idea that that's one of the proofs that they're required to make for the board to act affirmatively on the request for the time extension.
Can you, Bert? No.
Mr. Chairman, just clarification on that. I understand based on our professionals' recommendation and request of the applicant, it's actually for the two one-year extensions, and that would be the final extension, right?
Well, there'd be one more available at Denton, the end of that. Correct, thank you.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application for preliminary final major site plan, block 11901, lot 40, the applicant, and to, to the, to the applicant, my notes indicated we have three private schools for profit. All girls.
No, we didn't identify whether it was boys or girls.
I, I actually don't recall that, but just for the record, I'm Donna Jennings, the law firm of Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant. I don't think it matters if it's boys or girls, so we'll leave that open. It's two elementary schools and a high school.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And two elementary schools, 400 and 400, and a high school, 255, for a total enrollment of 1055.
No, that's incorrect. The elementary schools were 600 and 600, and 255 for the high school.
I have general note four telling me three schools, two being elementary, 400 students each in the elementary, and one high school, 255. The, they're in, in the plan view on the drawings, it shows me 600 and 600, the enrollment for each school, but my notes, and I'm going by note four, told me 44 and 255, but if I'm wrong.
I, I think you're incorrect. Ian testified, he's sitting to the left of me. Ian?
Go ahead. I do. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, president since 1996, graduate of Rutgers University 40 years ago, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Thank you. Yeah, the, the site plans indicate that the two elementary schools are 600 students, and the high school is 255.
And note four says on sheet one.
Oh, that is correct. Yeah, that does say four, so that's a typographical error in note four.
Which is fine, and the, the major difference is the number of parking.
Right.
I, I originally looked at it based on the note of 400 and 400, and which generated an excess of parking. So if now this, the enrollment is 600 and 600, that, you know, extra parking kind of goes away, and any comments that I might have had in my letter aren't really germane to this application, because we revised or adjusted the, the enrollment count. But really, the difference will be how much off-street parking is required. But regardless of 400 or 600 per school, the parking is still comprised.
And I just want to clarify for the record that he did testify at the last hearing, and I have the public hearing transcript, that three private schools are two elementary schools, we have the capacity of 600 students, and a high school with a maximum of 255. So it was just a note mistake, but he did testify to the 600 and the 255 last time.
We had some initial testimony back in November, and the applicant provides some revised plans. The most notable issues are a emergency fire lane behind the schools, as well as some internal modifications to the internal circulation aisles. Now, a, what was once a two-way, 30-foot wide driveway is a one-way, still 30-foot, but the, 30-foot has been divided into 15 and 15, one for buses and one for school drop-off. When we get to the traffic testimony, some supportive testimony from the applicant regarding the design waiver, you know, one-way aisles usually 18 feet wide, and we have 15 and 15, you know, in, in this, in this particular case. I think we, we got through the, the issue at the prior hearing, but I think for the public, and just for some informational purposes for the applicant, the issue of private and public schools. The ordinance allows for private, but not public, but there's, I believe there's a statute out there for Mr. Gertner where they're the same, you can't really discriminate, but there is an indication as far as school accreditation, is my understanding. Public, private schools don't have to be accredited where private schools would be, so there's a little inconsistency, you know, in that, so some testimony from the applicant, just to refresh the.
Does not have an accreditation from, for private.
Exactly. I think we discussed that at the initial hearing, but I just wanted maybe quickly revisit it just for the board's edification on the issue because there is no really standards for private schools. Public schools, yes, they're credited by the Department of Education. So there's a certain set of standards that need to be met, but it's not the case in the private schools. From an engineering perspective, we reviewed the revised plans. Lighting and landscaping, there'll be proper illumination of the parking lots. Landscaping, cracks, there could be some additional plannings throughout the site, the basin, the safety islands, but I really don't think it's a big issue that, you know, the applicant can't agree to or that we can work out through any type of resolution compliance should the board vote favorably on the application. Environmental, there's really no really issues. The applicant has submitted an environmental impact statement as well as an LOI that was deficient from the original application, but that tells us that the wetlands are as depicted on the plan as well as the associated buffer. So conditioned upon the applicant providing or securing all the environmental permits as well as the environmental commission, from an engineering perspective, all issues have been addressed. Utilities will be provided by public water and sewer. I believe that's kind of important because we really don't have to worry about impacts on the adjacent wells as well as impacts of a septic system in the area, a large septic system in the area that could potentially impact the adjacent wells. We take really no exception with the site grading. There are some technical details, there are several details regarding the drainage that needs to be worked out. But again, I don't really feel that that's anything that the applicant or that I can't work out with the applicant. Hopefully, we'll have some testimony regarding traffic. As I indicated, the revised plans call for a thirty-foot driveway in front of the schools, fifteen dedicated to buses and fifteen dedicated to student drop-off. So some testimony regarding the fifteen feet versus the eighteen feet that's required. We talked about, we clarified the issue of the number of students, so there's no excess in parking. Basically, there's also solid waste and loading, and I think that speaks to the operations of the site. There's no loading zone that's required, or I'm sorry, there's no loading zone is required, but no loading zone has been provided. So some testimony from the applicant, how the schools are going to work. And maybe a loading zone isn't required, maybe there should be. Same thing with the trash enclosure. Maybe it's big enough, maybe it's not. But I think that goes to the description of operations or the statement of operations that the applicant should be prepared to address. The devil's in the details, as indicated, engineering-wise, I don't think there's much here that we can't work out. But I'll refer to page three of my report where I went into, in my mind, what a school, private or public, I'm using public, the components that are involved with that. The administration, maintenance of the facility, both interior and exterior, and probably most important in the whole thing is security. I don't think we should lose sight of that. We have a thousand, eleven hundred kids here. Every time I've gone to a public school, they'll check your ID, they'll check, you know, your credentials, what you're there for. And as soon as you get in, there is a police officer armed and uniform. So some testimony from the applicant regarding what I would think is probably one of the more important issues. That's all for now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The original hearing date was on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Subsequently, the applicant submitted revised plans. Our office has a review letter, a second review letter dated March twenty-ninth of this year. Mr. Cle did go through what's occurred since the last application in terms of what's been submitted to the board. Obviously, we need to hear from the applicant's witnesses this evening regarding those changes. The one issue that I thought we touched on, but as I reread the transcript, I'm not sure we talked about it in any detail, was the idea that we have three separate entities, in this case, three separate schools. We haven't really tied them together as to who's responsible for them. The phrase that comes to my mind is like a clerk of the works. If these were three apartment buildings or three retail centers, we'd ask, who's the landlord? And so something to indicate who's responsible for the things that are going to go on and sort of tie together. We heard testimony from the planner and the traffic engineer about certain things will be done at certain times, in certain fashions. And I guess at some point, we'd look for some testimony to sort of tie that all together. Do all of these things become the responsibility of our code enforcement officer? Or is there someone from the applicant that's going to be the, and I apologize for the lack of a correct term, the landlord for the site? I would also note that while we did hear two of the applicant's witnesses, I don't believe that Doug and I were given an opportunity to cross-examine either of them. It appears that the board didn't have any instant comments or questions for the two witnesses because of the hour. And we went to the public, so I just remind the board and the public that I don't think the board nor the professionals for the board have had an opportunity to ask questions regarding the first two witnesses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Borden, who's sitting to my left, go through the changes in the site plan. I think we have a new exhibit. I think it'll address many of the questions. We're also going to clarify some of the information just indicated because we disagree with some of the factual information that was just stated. And again, this issue with the accreditation, it's our position. This is a private school. State does not require accreditation. We're not going to go through an exercise of, well, this is what we do in public school and how it compares with a private school. It's simply a private school, and therefore, there's no standards, which was readily admitted by Mr. Cle. A board has to have a standard in which to apply to an applicant because an applicant has to come to the board knowing what those standards are, and they've got to be able to comply with them. You have an ordinance. We have an application that is fully conforming with your site plan ordinance. And as Mr. Cle just indicated, his exact words with respect to engineering, not much here. So I'm not sure how many additional questions are going to be coming from them. I think Mr. Borden and Mr. Ray gave pretty thorough testimony at the last public hearing. They are both here again. They're going to go through the changes. We did think that there were some good comments out of both the reports from your board consultants, and we therefore addressed the ones that we felt were appropriate. And then we'll also have our architect here. So with that, I'm going to have Mr. Borden first go through his changes and whatever exhibits that he has this evening. And obviously, he'll be here for any questions that either the board consultants, the board members, or members of the public have, and we'll address them to the best of our ability. Okay, with that, Mr. Borden?
Yes, thank you. Anthony, if you don't mind scrolling down the exhibits. Next one. Next one. Next one.
Yeah, that is an exhibit that was not entered into evidence at the last hearing, so why don't you identify it for the record?
It's going in and out. I'll try it now. So at the board, one of the primary items we heard from the board members was providing for a direct emergency second vehicular access. So we added a twenty-foot wide fire lane that runs separately to Leesville Road and wraps around twenty feet wide because that meets the fire code requirements. And then, if you don't mind, could you enlarge this, Anthony, zoom in on just one of the schools? Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. Originally, the main, the loop road design was in the original design, but they were two-way. Made it confusing with bus drop-off. We made it one-way. And we have separate lanes. The lane that's immediately adjacent to the school is thirty feet wide. That is only for bus drop-off. That will also serve a loading function that I'll discuss in a few minutes. And then we created a separate parent drop-off lane with no parking on it, separated from the bus lane by an island, which I'm noting. And that lane is eighteen feet wide. So that does meet the ordinance requirements for a one-way drive. And then the rest of the aisles and the parking spaces remain twenty-four feet wide with two-way parking, consistent with the ordinance and consistent with the the original site plan that was submitted. And then we have the crosswalk that we added between the parking through the parent drop-off and across the bus drop-off. That was another item that we were requested. As a result of these changes, there's been no changes to the size of the schools, the number of students in each school. The stormwater management report, which Doug has received and Mr. McFarland can provide testimony if needed, was updated to reflect the layout. All of that information was submitted back to the planning board on January twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. I think it's important to note for the record that at that time, we did submit those same plans to the Bureau of Fire Prevention, and we received an approval from that office dated January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. So the Bureau of Fire Prevention has approved the circulation, including the rear access, emergency rear access. And then on February fourth, we just did a supplemental submittal of a couple of paperwork items. Most notably was a letter of interpretation that was issued by the DEP on January twenty-five. And we also had updated the boundary survey. Recall, at the November meeting, we had a waiver request for the boundary survey that was more than one year old. I don't recall if we committed to do that or not, but in any event, we felt it appropriate to do so. So we updated the survey and submitted that. And lastly, with that submittal on January twenty-five, we provided an updated statement of operations. One of the things that myself and my client did with Mr. Ray, who will give his own traffic testimony here or supplemental testimony in a few moments, is we focused heavily. We had, from the very beginning of this project, focused on the start and finish times of these schools as trying to ensure that they did not coincide with the start and finish times of the two local public schools, being the Switlick School and the Jackson Memorial High School. Those were further refined in the statement of operations that I had submitted on January twenty-five, where the K through five grades start at eight-thirty, end at three. Six through eight begin at seven-forty, end at three-forty-five. Nine through ten at seven-thirty start to eight-thirty end, and then eleven and twelve, seven-thirty start, and then nine-thirty end. So the high schools, nine through twelve, starts after the public schools, which start at seven, Jackson. And the K five through five also starts, I believe, after the elementary school. But Mr. Ray will give testimony on that. I'm going to make a point. I'm going to get into the operational questions that Doug had asked, but before that, Ernie had raised a really good question. I want to make sure we address that, and that is, who's going to maintain the site? Each school site will be a separate lease, much like a shopping center or any commercial use, and they will be individually maintained by the schools, meaning the parking area in front of the school. However, the main driveway and the landscaping and sidewalk along Leesville Road, as well as along the main spine drive, will be owned by a property owners' association. So there will be a property owner who will be responsible for the maintenance of that. Well, that's just a poor use of terms on my part because I no, no, that, I understand. That's just a poor, I'm sorry. That's just a poor use. It's not property owner, I guess. I'm thinking homeowner association, but they're not homeowners, you know, it's, there's going to be a I understand. The underlying property owner will be responsible to maintain those common improvements. Who is the applicant? Thank you. Well, the individual schools themselves will be maintained by that particular school, much like a lease of a pad site in a shopping center. But I'm talking about the common improvements. The common improvements being the main driveway, Leesville Road improvement, sidewalks will be maintained by the property owner.
When this place gets up and running, you're going to have three separate parking lots.
Yes.
And you're going to have roads. He's going to maintain them with snow and all of those.
The owner.
The owner's going to take care of that, even though those properties are actually leased.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to took notes on particularly the little comments starting on page three of the report. I just wanted to go through.
I'm sorry, before you start that, I have to have that clarified because that's not what you just said before that. You said the parking lots for each school would be taken care of by the school, and only the main drive would be taken care of by the owner. So you could have up to four different entities taking care of road upkeep, ice control, snow control, you know, four separate entities with the possibility.
I changed my position based on Mr. Riccardi's question.
So now you're down to just the owner taking care of all paid services?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
At his asking this question, I realized that that system that I said would not work.
Thank you.
As far as the school staff, I believe we had testified, I believe I testified at this at the last hearing, but just to be safe. Typically, there's three teachers for each class in the K through one, two teachers per class two through twelve. Normally, each school would have a principal and two vice principals. There will be a nurse or EMT present as a member of the staff of each individual school. As far as questions about the dining, there will be lunch. Lunch will be delivered to the school. This was testified to in November. There'll be one lunch delivery per day to each school. The delivery would occur where the portions of the bus drop-off lane will serve as a loading zone during those deliveries. That would only occur, of course, when the buses are not present. It will be after the students are in school and the buses are not at the site. As recall, please, that like the buses do not remain at the school during the school day. So while the buses are not there, the meals will be delivered. The dining room will serve, that's shown on the architectural plans, will serve the students on a staggered basis. The kitchen that's shown, I know it was a relatively small size, as noted by Mr. Cle's review. It will accept the delivery and just do final prep and distribute the food. There is no cooking per se in the kitchen. Yes, that's Dr. Campbell.
I noticed here we have a thirteen-hour day for the nine to ten and a fourteen-hour day for eleven to twelve. They're going to get one meal.
I believe they would get two meals for those grades.
I would imagine.
Yes.
I'm thinking about refuse. Is the refuse going to be taken away by the provider of the catering service?
It'll be taken away by the staff of the schools. We do have, if you don't mind, Anthony, scroll to the right, I guess, if I'm saying that the right way. There you go. Thank you. Towards the rear of the site, our turnaround, we have a large refuse area that has a compactor, has a compactor, separate compactors for the trash and recycling. They'll be brought there, and that will then be picked up, you know, by
So that during the winter, the two schools to the left of that area are going to go all the way over there to just
Well, that was my concept. This is one that we're using more and more for larger sites. I have spent personally a lot of time working with waste management, who of course are, I would say, the preeminent waste collection company. They have a lot of products. Understand that most of that work has been done apart as large commercial sites. I believe it may be an opinion of your professionals, we've discussed this on other projects, that they that that they might prefer a separate refuse with each school. If that were the case, I'm kind of preempting what they might ask me if they were to ask for that. I think we would certainly be amenable to that.
I'm just thinking that, you know, there are, you know, that large number of students at each one of those buildings eating one to two meals a day. Would, that'd be a long way to go.
I understand.
To remove the
I understand.
Trash.
And that's it's a catch twenty-two in in some respects in my mind, because the 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 benefit of the compact arrangement is is that it truly does reduce a large amount of trash to a very small volume. I've seen them, and they're magnificent, but
Maybe have refuse containers at each of the two lower school, middle school, and then remove it to the other area. That I could see, but that's, I just can't see how that would work, especially in the winter. They're just not going to, that's
I understand, and we're, we're I understand, and I agree, and we're amenable to to adding something at each school to make sure that that works
Thank you.
Fine. Office supplies. There, there's no loading dock, and nor would one be proposed for any school that I've ever seen. It would be typically, not typically, they're loaded, unloaded by pallet jack, you know, by a lift gate with a pallet jack, and then brought into the school. If if it's that heavy, was it normally or not? Because there, there's some side doors, I mean, I I would leave that to the operation of the school, but I, it would not be through the front door, it would be through a side door. Right? The one, the one thing we did not do, and we certainly can do this, is we did not like strike a loading zone to direct the trucks where to park. We certainly can can do that. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Building and the school staff would deliver the the food to the dining room. That was a question, Mr. Cleese's letter for distribution in the dining room. The building and site maintenance will be performed by the staff of the schools and the property owner, and will comply with the township ordinances in all respects. Questions regarding the gym, the gym are not used, the gyms of each school are not to be used for competitive sports, there's no no bleachers or spectators proposed. They may be used for internal school gatherings, but there are no performances for outside audiences. That includes sports and any performances otherwise. There are no showers in the schools. We do provide the outdoor recreation. They are intended to be general play areas. An individual school that might choose to be a tenant might have some might ask, seek to put in some play equipment, but that'll be a choice of of the schools. We tried to leave it areas available where they could do whatever's age-appropriate and and student-appropriate. And my clients have advised that the sizes of their creation are adequate. They, in all cases, will be supervised by school staff. Regarding security, the doors are locked at all times, access only with proper credentials. And there are video cameras to monitor the outdoor activities at the school entrances twenty-four hours a day. And lastly, we will provide EV-ready parking spaces at each school. Our our thought is to provide three of those per school. I mean, that's an arbitrary number, but
I, I was looking at the plans earlier today, and on the far right of each parking lot is looks like the available number of spaces would be a perfect faculty parking lot. And that, if you put the EVs in that area, it's going to be your teachers, the the staff that are going to be using them. So instead of trying to put them within the general parking area, if you perhaps made the faculty parking in those specific spots as faculty and staff, that would give them access to the EV.
That, that's fine, thank you.
So you might consider that.
We will definitely do that, thank you.
You have to remember, I spent forty years running these kinds of schools, so, so I every time I look at these, I think of problems that could be solved before we start.
We value your guidance, Dr. Campbell, thank you. So that, and and quickly on some site plan items. John Ray, there's performance standards in the ordinance that were raised in the reviews, while John Ray will address the traffic impacts. My testimony is that the the project will not contribute to impacts in noise, glare, air pollution, fire, or safety hazards. The lighting on the site, the Owen Little report makes some recommendations as far as increasing lighting in particular areas, most notably at the main drive close to Leesville Road. We we certainly would agree that the lighting will comply as a condition of any approval should be granted. The the lighting will comply with the township ordinance's minimum lighting requirements. There will be no off-site glare. Where shielding is necessary for the lights, we will provide that. It's important to understand, and again, this is, this is a repeat of the original testimony when I talked about the site and its surroundings. The the site is in the neighborhood commercial zone. All of the surrounding zones are also in the neighborhood commercial zone. There is no buffer. We do meet the landscape ordinance requirements. We do exceed those requirements, particularly with, we enhanced the landscaping between Leesville Road and the first school. We added quite a bit of some evergreen trees and some shrubs to to soften the view along Leesville Road. I I just, Mr. Cleese's letter makes some recommendations, as does Mr. Peters, about supplemental landscaping, and we agree to comply in all respects with those comments as well. As noted, well, as noted on the plans, on the parking summary on the first sheet, the parking that we provide is slightly exceeding the ordinance. The two elementary schools require seventy-five parking spaces, we provide seventy-eight. The high school requires eighty-five parking spaces, we require ninety-four. In in all cases, and and in my opinion, understanding the operation of these schools and the amount of staff, and the fact, recall that in the case of the high school, the students are not permitted to drive. That, that's an important factor. We certainly would suggest that we might greenbank some of the parking. But that that will be a discretion of the board. Otherwise, there was a question about irrigation, that will be provided by private well, not public water. Recall, the site does have public water and sewer. And otherwise, we would agree to comply with all the technical requirements of both review letters. No. Certainly. I think that would be fine. They would just have to go to different high schools. We're just trying to provide the amount of 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 use of this site that's appropriate for the township standards and the parking requirements.
I said, there's obviously a need for additional high schools for this community, and they'll have to go somewhere else. This site can only hold what it holds. I mean, you have specific ordinance criteria, which we were trying to make sure that we met each and every one of your ordinance standards, and the biggest thing there is the parking. So we created the schools, and even though they're not going to be used, those parking spaces, we wanted to make sure that we complied with the ordinance, and we do.
Now, I'm, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask my usual question. My usual question is, is there a possibility of taking some weight off our electric grid by providing solar?
I discussed that with my client today, in fact, because I should have included that in my we certainly hope so, but that would be dependent on the the tenant of each each building. Certainly, the roof area, in in my opinion, could support solar, but that would be something that he would propose to the to the individual tenants, and we hope it it can be done that way, but we we can't guarantee that.
We would hope so as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
These buildings are usually designed for ingress, more importantly, egress. And if you're going to accept the food, the freight, whatever you want to call it, coming in through the main entrance, that kind of includes the purpose of the egress. I, I don't know how to resolve it, or nor will I instruct you how to resolve it, but I just think you need to consider that, and I'm not so sure that the fire district is even aware of that.
The food, the food, Mr. Edgar, would not utilize the main entrance. It will use one of the side doors, I'm not sure which one, though. It will not utilize the main, the main access.
Mr. Chairman? I think Mr. Borden needs to stop and let someone else answer this question. Because the only other entrance is on the left-hand side of the building, and it's in a recreation area. Now we're going to let people in one or two times a day, don't have to pass through security. It's a hall, it's a, the left-hand side architect plans are stairwells. So there's no one going to check someone that walks in that stairwell. No way of checking who walks in. They either walk in that floor, up a floor, down a floor. There's no one at the side gate checking who walks in the door.
The the architect is present, she'll, she'll answer that question when we're done our Mr. Ray's testimony.
Mr. Chairman?
That's fine. That's fine.
With your statement of operations, is there a school year stipulated September to June?
I'll let the architect answer that question as well.
But it's not an architectural question, it's an operations question. Is there, are there going to be summer camps there? Operationally speaking, most schools go from September to June.
Chairman, to to the extent it fits in at any particular place, there's a pending potential state law changing the overall high school start times to eight-thirty. So this may be an operational issue, maybe germane or not. But I don't know how that, I think when we're talking about operations, it may be useful to see to what extent, at least from a conversational standpoint, how the gears work if the high school start times in the state of New Jersey with a law sponsored by Coglin and which other fellow? Bingopow, if it changes start times to eight-thirty statewide, to what extent, I mean, operationally, whether it's germane here or not, I think it's a topic that folks would want to know about if it comes to pass as it relates to transport. Again, it may not be related directly to the application, but if that comes to pass, that may be a significant operational issue internally or externally to others.
Thank you. Yeah, our high school start times are seven-thirty somewhere. We'd fall still within that gap, you know, they start at seven now, if it's eight-thirty later, we're still in that, in that gap.
Chatham and Princeton, I think, are eight-thirty now. It may not be relevant, but I just want to bring it up.
Thank you.
Still, we don't have an answer yet on, oh, the school year, how long that is from when to
Not yet.
I'm sorry?
No, I don't have an answer for that. We'll get that answer for you. Okay.
Excuse me, with with another question. With that lengthy school day, it is a lengthy school day, is there a possibility of that being dual sessions?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll let my client answer that.
Thank you.
So I just want to go back to the the question the chairman had about two schools at six hundred and the high school at two and change. They're not related. So we're thinking that the six hundred are going to go on to that high school. There may be different training that they go to, so it may be a different type of school. These are three separate schools. They're not connected. Am I correct? Thank you. You have to say yes.
Yes. I said, I thought I said correct, but yes.
I guess my last question on operations is, grades eleven and twelve are ending at nine-thirty at night, is what you're saying. So out of two hundred fifty-five kids, you're going to have six, two, seven kids getting on buses between nine-thirty and ten o'clock at night every night?
Let my client, yes, my understanding, that's the times I was given.
Thank you.
You know, I I hear the bus coming down my street every day, and it's quite loud. Kids are going to be getting dropped off, you know, and and thirty in the evening, and with school buses rumbling through residential areas. It turns me, the noise and
Well, we have a state noise code that does not regulate roads. So, I mean, it is what it is. And there's lots of activities. I played sports all through high school. I got home a lot of times on the late, late bus to play the sports and practice late at night or go to a late game.
Yes. Well, certainly, the neighborhood commercial zone permits uses that would would and easily could extend well past those operating hours. We are permitted to have bars, restaurants, convenience stores, I believe, that could operate well past those those hours that we're describing. No, but there's, 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 there's trucks. Delivery trucks in some cases, or and and a school bus. Delivery trucks. Could be delivery trucks, could be patrons and trucks.
I think this is really going kind of far afield. We don't regulate the roads. We have lots of uses in the town that are going on after nine-thirty at night. We have lots of uses in the town that are going on after 9:30 at night.
I realize I'm not the parents, so I have no real ability to make changes to this. You had said that you played sports in high school, and I did as well. And I would get home late on occasion. But you've got a 7:30 to 9:30 day, six days a week. That's brutal. That's, that's tough. In addition to the buses coming and going. That's a rough day.
I'm not here to disagree with you, but that's how they teach their children. And this is a private school, and the parents are well aware of what the hours of operation are. They want to get the best bang for their buck. They want their children in school learning.
Just a quick one, should be on the statement of operations. Our lawyer just mentioned it was Sunday through Thursday operation. Doesn't say that in the statement of operations. He says not Monday through Friday. If it's something different than normal week.
Borden, did you hear that comment?
Yeah, find us to correctly. The statement doesn't identify how many days a week they operate. I'll allow my client to answer that question.
Been hearing open up, no, many times, to know that, you know, the size of the hours of operation, the days of operation should also be included in the statement of operations. That's a mistake. Correct?
Well, certainly, certainly it is. And I'm certainly attentive to it on a commercial use. Honestly, didn't think of it for a high school. If I was perfect, you wouldn't have to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Borden often gets to go first and gets many arrows tossed at him, I took note of two things that were said that I think we'd hope to get additional testimony from other witnesses on. One had to do with the rec area. It was, I think Mr. Borden said, the rec area is adequate for each of the schools as per his client. I'd like to know what that means. Saying it doesn't mean something. Someone's gotta show me what adequate means. Putting a fence up isn't adequate. And then, as it relates to the hours of operation, I guess the only, I guess I want to know, are the teachers gonna be there 13 or 14 hours a day? Or are there gonna be two shifts of teachers? Does that need to be reconciled in the traffic counts or the parking calculations? I don't expect Mr. Borden to answer either of those questions, but I just wanted to bring those up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, just going back to the food service, if I understand it correctly, at lunchtime, 11:30, there's gonna be a truck or trucks that come up with 600 meals. And are the teachers eating also? Do they supply them with food also?
I'll let my client answer that.
600 meals, and that's going to be brought into the front of the building? Or is that also gonna be like deliveries on the side?
That's gonna be answered by my client.
And there'll be other deliveries for food for the later shifts for the ninth to 12th graders. Same, it'll be the same type, you know, operation they'll pull up. Somehow, the meals will get downstairs in the basement, and somehow, they're gonna be distributed to the students and teachers, maybe. And then, all that trash is somehow gonna get from the individual schools to the single trash enclosure. And we briefly talked about security, and I heard check-in and credentials, but I didn't hear anything about an actual designated security personnel person on site.
My understanding from discussing that with my client this morning, that there is no designated security personnel. There is no resource officer like public schools have.
You don't think that'd be a good idea?
It might be a good idea, but it's not a fire.
And, right.
I'll speak to the safety of the children. That's, and I'll leave it at that.
If the, if the school district provided one, I'm sure they'd be happy to accept one. One is provided to the public schools at no cost to the schools. I doubt the same provisions would be made for a private school.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Mr. Ray?
November, November 15, 2021, there's testimony. You look at the agenda, it talks about those eligible to vote. To vote, however, we have three new members on here. I'm presuming every, all the new members have reviewed either the transcript of the meeting or the Zoom. Yeah, can you affirmatively say yes, each of, starting right to left, to my right to left?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the transcript and the Zoom.
Thank you. Just to clarify this from the agenda's perspective. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Do you want to swear, Mr. Ray, in, or is he?
Yes, I should.
Sorry. Mr. Ray, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sir, can you kind of give us your full names, spell your last, your affiliation, and to the chairman's acquiescence and acceptance, your credentials? John Ray, R-E-A, a professional engineer and a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquon, New Jersey. And you are a... A licensed professional engineer with a specialty in traffic engineering, testifying on traffic engineering issues. And licensed where? In the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. So you testified at length at the last public hearing. And if I recall correctly, two issues came up. One, with respect to the NJDOT counts that one of the members of the public had brought up. And you went back to look at your counts. If you could just go through that. And if you have an exhibit you want to share, let's mark it and we'll pass it out.
Yes, at the last meeting, I believe Ms. Hanam was her name. She came up to the podium and introduced some NJDOT traffic counts that were found on the NJDOT website along East Veterans Highway, right in front of the municipal building. And she made the assertion that the counts were inconsistent with the counts that I used in the traffic study. And I went back, I looked at my traffic counts, I looked at the counts that she testified to from the DOT, and I prepared an exhibit showing that actually, the traffic counts not only are very consistent, but actually, my traffic counts were a little bit higher. And I think we're up to A6. So if I can introduce this as A6, I ran extra copies. I will distribute them to the board members and leave a few for the public as well.
For the record, if you could, what is the title of A6?
Traffic volume comparison, CR528, NJDOT and MRA, that's McDonough and Ray Associates counts.
And just so the record's clear, can you just go through what's shown on the actual chart?
Well, let, before we do, let's pass it out so we can follow it. But I also want to just, as have our professionals at least seen this exhibit yet, to be able to... I don't believe so. No. All right. So they're gonna reserve their right to have the opportunity to review that if they feel it necessary.
Hey, it's like literally two columns, but okay.
We don't know what we're looking at yet. So they may be able to handle it. I don't think... So A6 consists of two pages, and Mr. Ray will describe what those two pages... Correct. Okay, it's very simple. But hang on, let everybody get a copy. Thank you. And do you have an extra copy for the board secretary and the professionals? No, no. Okay.
No, it's dead.
All right, now it's loud again. Okay, I just turned the switch on and off. That's what we always do. When my computer doesn't work, just turn it off, turn it back on again. Okay, so I'll try to explain what this is. It's very basic, very simple. I took the NJDOT counts that Ms. Hanam testified to at the last meeting in November. They were in the transcript. And I summarized them where it says DOT. Those are the DOT counts. And to the right of that are the counts that my firm used for the traffic study, which were manual turning movement counts that were conducted at Veterans Highway and Don Connor Boulevard, Leesville Road. And as you can see, I'll just run through these from 8:00 to 9:00 AM in the morning, which is the critical peak hour for analysis for the school. The DOT counts totaled 777 two-way traffic movements on East Veterans Highway. Yes.
Because these times are not consistent with the school, that the school has a starting time of like 7:00 AM, and...
Mr. Hudek, yep.
Proposed school is, you know, 7:30. So this is not within that time span.
Okay. I was expecting that because I looked at that as well, too, and I will have an explanation for that in one minute. I, originally, when the statement of operations was given to me, the school hours were different. We've subsequently changed the school hours. Mr. Borden provided some testimony on that, and I don't think it's an issue, and I'll explain why. Let's just look at the counts that were in the traffic study that were used to the traffic study as compared to the DOT counts. My count, 38 vehicles higher during the morning peak hour and 17 vehicles higher during the afternoon peak hour, perhaps inconsequential, but certainly consistent with the NJDOT counts. The eight... Okay. Okay, the traffic study still looks at a worst-case scenario, assuming that our peak hour is coincide with the eight to nine traffic counts. And if I go back and use the traffic counts from 7:00 to 8:00, they're lower than the eight to nine o'clock counts. So just, and that's why I made an extra page for me to testify from, because I fully expected this question to be asked. At the intersection of Don Connor Boulevard and Veterans Highway between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, there were 949 vehicles going through the intersection. Between 8:00 and 9:00, there were 1,063 vehicles, more than 100 vehicles higher during the eight to nine peak hour. I could go back and use the lower traffic numbers. I don't think the board would want me to do that. I've already recommended some significant improvements that need to be made at the intersection of Veterans Highway and Don Connor Boulevard, specifically the addition of a southbound left turn arrow and a northbound right turn lane. If I go back and take a look at these seven to eight traffic counts, maybe they won't be necessary. I don't know, but we're committed to making those improvements. I don't think it would be proper for me to go back and look at the lower traffic volumes unless that's something the board wants me to do. We've committed ourselves to doing some significant improvements at the intersection. I think they will improve overall traffic flow. And again, I don't think it's gonna change anything. The small decreases in traffic volume from seven to eight, I could go back and relook at it, but I've done a conservative or a worst-case scenario.
So these recommendations that you have discussed, do you have a visual representation to show us?
Just the narrative. These improvements need to be designed in accordance with the Ocean County engineering standards. We've made an application to the county planning board. They've got a traffic study, and they're aware of the fact that we're proposing these improvements.
So you don't have any plans of these improvements?
No, not yet.
That you can show us and we can see them?
Just a narrative. South, I think we all understand what I'm talking about. A left turn arrow for southbound traffic in the left turn lane on Don Connor Boulevard on Leesville, turning left onto eastbound Veterans Highway, and the addition of a full right turn lane on the northbound approach. And that basically will help, help the traffic that's coming out of the high school that kind of co-mixes with some of our traffic during peak hours.
How many feet, or is this...
Subject to Ocean County engineering approval. Subject to Ocean County engineering approval. I wish I could tell you, Mr. Hudek, it's up to the county to tell us how long they want that right turn lane to be. I haven't looked at, it's up to the county. We'll present the numbers to the county and see what they want. It's county jurisdiction. They're gonna make the final call. I mean, I wish I had an answer for you, but it's up to the county engineering department. They've been asking for a lot lately. I can tell you that.
Have you personally reviewed the, these plans with the traffic system?
Yes.
And?
Quite frankly, I think we've done a good job. Mr. Borden's done a good job of addressing the concerns that we heard at the first meeting. I can go over some of them. Anthony, if you can circle in on one of the schools, just maybe scroll it back to the, to the left. As Mr. Borden indicated, we've gone to a one-way circulation system in a counterclockwise direction. We previously had a two-way circulation system in there. We realized that didn't make a lot of sense. There's a 30-foot drive aisle for the buses to discharge and pick up students. The buses are eight feet wide, so even if the bus parks two feet away from the curb, they'll take up about 10 feet, leaving 20 feet for other traffic to bypass the buses. 18 feet is the normal standard that I think the township uses and that a lot of traffic engineers use. We're gonna be there, because the buses are gonna be two feet off the curb, eight feet wide. We're gonna have 20 feet left for a car to bypass the buses. The parents will be dropping the kids off if, if there is that activity. And we do expect, the information that's been provided to me was that up to 5% of the children at any time may be dropped off because they miss a bus, or the parents are running late, or there's some reason why they have to be taken in a private automobile to the school.
Have you verified that number?
No.
Where did that 5% come from?
From the applicant, from, from the operator. And I used, I didn't, I didn't go with the 5%. I testified to this at the last meeting. I doubled that. I assumed 10% of the kids would be dropped off, because again, I wanted to do a conservative analysis.
Are you familiar with Jackson Memorial traffic flow with the buses?
I've seen it. Yeah, I've observed it.
You see the way that they have, they block off where only buses can go through that one lane and all cars dropping off.
Yes.
It's split.
Yes.
Is this the same way?
Pretty much. I mean, not exactly the same configuration, but the, the parking lot for staff and for parent drop-off is separated from the aisle that the buses are gonna use.
See, my concern is a parent who are coming in to drop off their kid stays to the right and goes in the area where the buses are. And there's going to be other parents that are gonna be dropping off on the other side of that road. So you're gonna have students that could be walking in front of cars. So I...
So I think there has to be some separation. Buses only in this lane and cars only in this lane.
Well, certainly, we can, at the entrance into the parking field, we can add signage very clear delineating buses to the right, parents to the left. Yes, agreed, agreed. And the other thing I wanted to comment on, there's been a lot of discussion about how delivery is going to be made. I've spoken to my client regarding that. The school buses are going to be there up until about eight-thirty in the morning, then they're going to leave. They're going to come back in the afternoon. I know the high school will be different. Those students are going to get out later in the evening, but for the two elementary schools, the buses are going to come back about three-thirty in the afternoon. That gives us a seven-hour window to accept deliveries for food, for office supplies. It's my understanding that those deliveries will be made using the path that the school buses would take and parking in front of one of the schools. Like I said, we've got a seven-hour window to coordinate that activity. I think that's sufficient. As far as how they're going to get into the buildings, I'll probably leave that up to my client and to the architect. That's not something a traffic engineer usually gets involved in. But I can tell you, we do have a seven-hour window for those delivery vehicles to pull up, use the area where the buses unload and pick up students. That's pretty sufficient, I think, for that activity. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
Did you base your study on a September to June?
Yes, and the reason is if the school is open in the summer, the Jackson schools aren't open and the peak hour traffic volumes with two major Jackson schools in the area, I'm not as concerned about the summer impacts. The volumes are going to be lower during the traditional peak hours.
But that we're talking about a facility that would hold six hundred-plus students during summer hours who would be most likely driven.
They would still have to be.
That might seriously impact Leesville Road.
I'll let my client answer that question, but my understanding and my traffic study is based on the students being bused and my study is based on ten percent of the children being dropped off by private automobile.
The statement of operations says five percent.
Correct, and I doubled that.
That has not been my experience with any, any school, let alone a private school, no school.
Okay, well, I'm following the information that I've been given by my client. And again, I understand your concern and that's why I took that five percent figure. I doubled it to ten percent. You folks know me, I've been here a long time. I'm trying to do a conservative analysis. I'm not trying to pull a wool over anybody's eyes. I'm giving you a conservative analysis. That's all I can do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might. John, the entrance to the building three in the back, as you come off the main road, trying to figure out where the dumpster is, is that two-way in and out?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so there's a bit of a hairpin turn there, isn't there?
The turning radius templates have been laid on the plan and they work. I'm not sure.
It's a six-foot turning radius for to go in and make a right-hand turn. And it's probably a hundred and thirty-five degrees. If you come in the entrance where the dumpster is.
Are we talking about right here?
And make a right.
Okay, we, you know what, we do, I know the buses can negotiate into this area.
I'm just talking about any vehicle. I think that that radius is too small if that's a two-way aisle.
It is a, it is shown as a two-way aisle, but it shouldn't be. It should be one-way. That's one-way.
At some point, someone will reconcile that because obviously if it's one-way, having that short radius.
Ernie, I stand corrected. That can be two-way in here because you can't have people coming out of these parking aisles that, you know, would make a right turn. We will take a look at that turning radius. It's a good point. Ian and I will take a look at that. We'll lay the templates on there. We'll make sure that a school bus can get around that turn.
Thank you.
We're talking about this area right here.
Correct. Vehicles, emergency service vehicles, buses. I'm more concerned that a parent tries to come in there and make a right-hand turn. It just, it can be better.
Actually, Ernie, I stand corrected. As I look at this little, the buses are going to come down and use this separate entrance over here. They're going to be separated completely. This is only going to be used by passenger vehicles.
So I'm still concerned that we can make the vehicle movements in that hairpin turn.
We will take a second look at that, but again, the intent was to have the buses utilize a separate entrance into the drop-off and pickup area.
The hairpin turn with the recreation area right on the outside of that turn.
Recreation area is here.
Go down. To the right, to the right, no, to the right.
To the right.
Yeah, there is a recreation area.
I don't.
Is that not the turn you're talking about?
He's talking about this.
I think we're talking about two different areas.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought he was talking about that turn right there with the recreation area right there.
No, I think Mr. Peters was talking about over, just up a little bit into the left from the refuse collection area. Yeah, that's okay. Lastly, I almost forgot what the second point was I wanted to make. There was a question about the intersection of Leesville Road and Freehold Road, which is up about a mile north of the site up on Leesville Road and what impact this school may have on that intersection and whether I should take a look at that. Fortunately, my firm also did the traffic study for Jackson Woods Southeast section, which is four hundred and some odd units up off Freehold Road. We published the traffic study in 2021. We looked at that intersection in detail. We projected traffic volumes to a 2031 design year. As everybody knows, that's a four-way stop intersection with flashing red signals on all four approaches. It's a multi-way stop, a four-way stop. That intersection will operate at B level of service for the morning and afternoon peak hour, even with that Jackson Woods project included in the traffic flow for the 2031 design year. So I'm very confident that any impacts from this school can be absorbed with a B level of service during the morning and afternoon peak hour. I couldn't see any impact there resulting in anything worse than level of service C at that intersection. Probably stay at a B. So there is capacity at that location to absorb whatever increases in traffic are generated from the school. Even though I think if you look at the population density within Jackson, I do think the majority of the site-generated traffic flows are going to come down and go through the intersection of Veterans Highway and that's why we're recommending improvements for that location, for the signal.
What are the recommended improvements to that?
The southbound left turn arrow and the northbound right turn lane.
I'm sorry, back, I apologize. You're not talking about Leesville and Freehold. You're okay with that?
Yes, it's a four-way, multi-stop controlled intersection that will operate acceptably for the next ten years at a good B level of service. And the last thing I wanted to mention too, which I did mention during my original testimony back in November, as a result of the traffic that we're going to generate, we are recommending a separate southbound left turn lane on Leesville Road for traffic entering the site driveway and a northbound right turn lane. Again, designed in accordance with Ocean County engineering standards. I can't tell you how long those left turn lanes and right turn lanes are going to be. That'll be worked at based on the Ocean County design standards.
Mr. Wright, do you have a feel for the anticipated queuing towards your site from the intersection across from Town Hall? So from Don Connor and Leesville heading north to your site, you're, I don't know what the distance is to the entrance of your site. As you come out, you've indicated that heading south on Leesville, we're going to need a dedicated left turn lane.
Right.
Does the queuing of that intersection?
The left turn lane is there now. We need a left turn arrow to be added to the left turn lane.
Does the queuing at that intersection impact your site driveway?
It won't when we're done, when we're done with the improvements, it will not. That's the purpose of the left turn arrow.
And I guess my question is, without knowing what the county's going to do, we don't know what the impact to your site driveway is going to be.
I do. That's why I made the recommendation for the left turn arrow. Without the left turn arrow, there could be an issue with queuing back to the driveway. With the left turn arrow to flush those left turns out, that's the whole reason and the whole purpose for the recommendation to add the southbound left turn arrow.
So now I have to play devil's advocate for a minute. The county doesn't agree with you. We come back here and talk about putting a traffic signal at your site driveway in the intersection?
I don't think there's any way, Ernie, I've been doing this a long time, so I don't think there's any way the county will disagree with us offering to put a left turn arrow in at the signal. I really don't think it's going to happen.
I'm trying to figure out how when you leave here with preliminary and final approval, if something isn't as per what we, are you coming back?
I guess we'd have to.
Thank you.
When you come back, I would love to see some visuals of what you do. Pointer, show us the traffic flow and where things are getting backed up to and so forth.
You suffer the same indignity as everyone else.
I don't actually think that's really relevant. This is the county's road, county jurisdiction. As you know, this is a permitted use and under the land use law and case law, any permitted use, you're not allowed to look at off-track traffic impacts under the Duncan.
I understand that, however, I'm looking at the safety aspects of this and the entrance of this facility is my concern. It's all about safety.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my concern was, existing or not, if the proposed intersection for this site is too close to the existing intersection, maybe it should be moved. So without knowing how far traffic backs up in the existing condition, I can't tell you whether or not the proposed site access that's on that plan is satisfactory. I'm not asking to fix someone else's problem. I'm asking him to show us what the existing problem is and if they're making a recommendation to an outside agency to fix that so that they can accomplish their project, I don't think that's us asking them to fix someone else's problem. That's them telling us how they can make their project work.
I agree, and for the attorney to say, "We're not going to do it," is a bit much.
Mr. Chairman, I also add to think that public safety, excuse me, excuse me. I also think to say that public safety is a waste of effort of time is pretty abhorrent and I expect better.
No, I didn't say that at all.
Can I attempt to answer the question since it is a traffic engineering question? All right, because I just looked at my report and going back to the recommendation for the left turn arrow on the southbound approach, without the left turn arrow, the anticipated queuing in the left turn lane is going to be five hundred and twenty-three feet during the morning peak hour. Five hundred and twenty-three feet. I don't know how far our driveway is from the intersection, but that could impact the driveway. With the left turn arrow, and this is the eighty-fifth percentile queue, so it's the design parameter that we use, we reduce it from five hundred and twenty-three feet to a hundred and forty-three feet. Solves the problem.
And that's material to your testimony, is it not?
Yeah, yes.
So therefore it should be condition of approval and if the county doesn't approve it.
We have to come back.
Solves the issue.
Yeah.
Well, that's not what, may I, may I, Mr. Chairman? That's not, excuse me. You're respectfully, you're misconstruing, I think, what the chairman was articulating. All the chairman articulated is, Mr. Ray is, is, as I perceive it, and Mr. Ray, if you can correct me, because sometimes I try to describe what you say and I don't get it. But what it appears to me what you said is, here's Leesville Road, how's it going to look? And what's the, show us on a map the differential of the hundred and something feet versus the five hundred feet. So the board can perceive from a piece of paper, from a picture, as to what that recommended, recommended change would be.
Well, I tried to just, in a narrative fashion, five hundred and forty-two feet to a hundred and forty-three feet. Big difference.
But I guess the question, Mr. Chairman, if I'm also misconstruing what you're trying to articulate.
I'm a visual person. I like to see it visually represented.
What does that mean, what is, I apologize again. What does that mean to, maybe you can at least attempt narratively, through a narrative. What does that mean on that, on the exhibit that's there? Where does that left turn lane get painted? Can you, can you maybe show us with a pointer? I recognize to you maybe a little rudimentary, but I think it'd be important. I think, am I trying?
Anthony, can you go back to the exhibit that's the aerial photograph and maybe blow up the intersection?
Thank you. Please, give it a shot. Thank you.
Okay, there's the site outlined in yellow and if you keep scrolling, we'll get to the quick check and we'll get to the signalized intersection. There you go.
But also your entrance in conjunction with the strip mall, which is directly across the street, so.
Yeah, we're.
We have issues.
We're a little bit north of the strip mall entrance and the county has seen the plan. And again, because of that, we're adding the left turn lane for southbound Leesville Road. So our left turn traffic will enter the site before it has any impact on the strip center's driveway. But if we scroll down a little bit more, you can see, and I don't know if we can blow this up, there is a left turn lane for traffic turning into the quick check driveway and turning at the traffic signal at Veterans Highway. We're just going to be adding a left turn phase because we're going to be adding traffic to that movement and we have to mitigate that, that impact. This is the intersection. Right now, there is no left turn arrow for southbound traffic turning left, going east on Veterans Highway. There is not a left turn arrow. We're going to be adding that to the traffic signal. That's going to help the quick track, quick check traffic as well too. It's going to help anybody that's making a left turn.
Mr. Corrigan?
No, we're talking about the high school.
You're talking about traffic that's coming out to West Veterans.
I'm talking about traffic that leaves our site, turns left to come down to the intersection at Veterans. Correct, correct. Which, which we believe is going to be, the majority of the traffic coming out of the site is going to do that based on where the population density is within the township.
So, Mr. Ray, again, I'm proving I didn't understand. Is there also, are you proposing a dedicated left turn lane onto your site from Leesville?
Yes, yes.
Also, so can you do us a favor? And Mr. Jacob, can you scroll to right in front of the site and blow it up and then where the entrance would be?
The entrance is going to be basically right, just about where I'm indicating now, at the southern part of the property. You can't see because of the tree cover here. You're not going to be able, you can't see the striping along Leesville Road, but we're going to be widening right in here to provide a left turn lane for traffic turning into our site.
Would have been much easier if you.
I do the best I can. I, I don't know. But I understand you'd like to see something visually. I'm trying to explain in a narrative fashion what the improvements are that need to be made in order to mitigate our impact and make sure everybody, including the people that are using the intersection now, have an easier time negotiating through the intersection.
Yes, okay. I'm not exactly well subscribed to having one in, in and out of the cell. And I'm going to use your map. I count twelve buses parked, dropping off kids. That gives us the six-twenty-four, which is your six hundred. I'll even say there's ten buses. You testified that five percent of the student population, I'll call them lost kids, that they're the ones that missed the bus or showed up late. Okay, so that's thirty for the two larger schools, thirteen for the high school. I'm going to throw away the thirteens. If you came into a queuing system on-site using the left school, I'll call that school number X. I don't know how people are going to get in and out. Crazy parents dropping off a kid frustrated, trying to get around. off a kid frustrated, trying to get around buses, people coming in and out, the parking lot's already loaded. That first school, School A, to try to get out of that A parking lot and get queued to get over to Leesville Road, I don't know what the distance is from the exit of the parking lot to Leesville. It really doesn't matter. But I see a backup occurring in your facility at School A, and then when you get to Leesville, at this point, there's a stop sign. Maybe sometime in the future, there may be a traffic light. But at that juncture, if you have people going towards Town Hall where we're sitting, you have 523 feet. I'm going to whack it by 20 and say a car is 18 foot long, which is a parking spot. They're bumper to bumper, that's 26 cars that get queued out of there. You have two schools hypothetically that are using, which is 60 cars of latecomers, frustrated parents who don't know what they're doing, okay? It has been proven in every school that whoever's showing up late, they are the mayhem. Okay? And then you're trying to get the, the buses out, and you're trying to get people in. I'm not well subscribed to what entrance is enough to make this thing work, to get in, in and out, because just the volume and just the mayhem of people showing up late. And I've had kids at the high school over here, and people couldn't read a sign if you smacked them in the head, but, you know, it's just, that's life. I mean, attend graduation over here, you could say. So my concern is, I will tell you, I'm not well subscribed to the comings and goings in and out of the facility itself, specific to School A, and you don't have enough real estate to queue up that 500 feet to West Veterans, and then everybody in quick check only has one avenue to get out, unfortunately. And if anybody wants to make a left, like I do, you know, go and grab a few or coffees, they're never going to get into that queue line, even if you gave them a dedicated lane with a left turn arrow. It's just, it's going to be mayhem.
Well, God forbid, if there's ever an emergency. Well, forget that.
Look, guys, I'll try to answer your question as best as I can. I tried to take it all in, okay? The purpose, the 523 feet we're talking about is without the left turn arrow. That's why I recommended the left turn arrow. The queuing goes down to 143 feet with the left turn arrow. That's the whole purpose of doing a traffic study, to determine what needs to be done in order to handle this traffic. So there's no 523 feet anymore. It's gone. It's 143 in the morning, and it's 200 in the afternoon. We're trying, I'm trying to address your, your concern, as best as I can.
We're blessed to have it, I will say that. But again, you know, getting in and out of Parking Lot A and that function, I'm not well subscribed to. It's my statement. I'm not saying you're wrong on Leesville Road, but I just think so much going on for Parking Lot A to get to Leesville.
Mr. Gardner? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, let me, again, attempt maybe to, Mr. Ray, I'm going to try to sort of consolidate that question. Can you offer an opinion to the board and to the public as to the importance of the separate start and end times for each school and how that potentially impacts the ingress and egress?
Sure, that's part of why, you know, the applicant has taken a second look at that and tried to stagger the start and, you know, dismissal times for the different schools. That's, that's part of the process as well, too. Sure.
So, and I recognize that articulation seems as if it's self-evident and common sense, but can you utilize, thank you, I already know where you're going, but can, can you please utilize words and numbers to describe how that's important and, and why, why the second look was taken and how that's going to work?
Okay.
To the best of your ability, based on your.
This is, this is from the revised statement of operations. Grades K through 5 will start at 8:30. There's going to be a total of, what, 1,200 students in the two schools? So I'm assuming that might be two, maybe two-thirds of that, because grades 6 through 8, which will also be at the elementary school, they're going to start at 7:40. So out of the 1,200 elementary school students, maybe 800 of them are going to start at 8:30, and 400 of them are going to start at 7:40. So there's going to be a 50-minute difference in the start time for those different grades. Similarly, at the end of the day, grades K through 5 are going to be discharged at 3 o'clock, and 6 through 8 are going to be discharged at 3:45. Not even going to get into the high school, because they're going to be discharged at 8:30 and 9:30 in the evening. They're going to be totally offset from the elementary school. So trying to put numbers on it, I would say grades K through 5 might represent 800 of the 1,200 kids, and 6 through 8 would represent 400, and they're going to be offset by 45 to 50 minutes, both in the start time and the dismissal time.
And that, those numbers and that operation is fundamental to how you've opined as to how the site operation will work as to traffic, right?
It is, and it actually makes the conclusions I've reached in my traffic study even more solid, because, you know, these things only help.
So is it not important to ensure from the board's perspective, given your testimony, that that's fundamental to your count and the process, that a, Mr. Peters' words, a clerk of the works, the landlord, that there's some ultimate decider of site operations to interact both with traffic safety from the municipal level to the extent that's required with the Board of Education, to ensure that that continued separation occurs, so that you don't have a, my words, a rogue principle?
And I've always assumed that the, the board, when it gets to, you know, a point where it's going to vote, will make that a condition of an approval. We've always assumed that, yeah.
All right. But, so I appreciate that, but now I'm, you're testifying. So again, I don't really see that in the statement of operations, and while you all may have presumed or assumed it.
It's.
I, it's not, not as, and, and I know that was a place where Dr. Campbell's been going as well, is the idea that the site itself must have a site manager, and the description of that entity or person's control and direction, I think, is important, based on my review of the, both of our experts' reports. I think that should be articulated. And we'll wait for that testimony as well to maybe further flesh.
He's going to, I'll show you that, but he's next. Okay. I've just been told that my client's going to have a traffic coordinator setting these rules and regulations up. You'll probably have an opportunity to hear from him later. But my traffic study is based on, and my testimony is based on the fact that there are going to be staggered start times and end times for the various grades.
So based on your plus or minus 40 years of experience, have you ever done site and traffic analysis for a public school?
Absolutely, yes.
So can you describe, just for some baseline, for some foundation, when you do that for a public school, how does, how do those traffic counts, ingress and egress, how does that get reconciled ultimately with the superintendent of schools, traffic safety and the like? Because.
Usually, the school has a traffic coordinator, like I've just been told these schools will have. I, I did studies for Milburn Township, for Montgomery Township, for their public school systems, and they, they basically function like a private school. And to be perfectly honest with you, we all know, like Dr. Campbell said, there's 10 or 15 minutes in the morning, and it's kind of like organized chaos, and the same thing in the afternoon. It happens at public schools, it happens at private schools. I don't think it's going to be any different here, but we have designed a safe plan.
And, and I think that's the point, just to also clear that up, and thank you, Mr. Ray, for making a statement. I recognize that. That's why the statute recognizes that at least as to safety and security and processes like this, that public and private schools ought to be treated and must be, not want to be, I apologize, must be treated equally without discriminatory.
I agree 100%. The kids are kids, whether they're in public school or private school.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
And this is exactly the reason that I, I'm continuing to ask for when, what the months of operation are, because I think the staggering is great. That would have certainly, you know, in my experience, we always staggered the grade school and the high schools, so that, because of traffic situation. Although, I do know that there will be some parents who will have students in one, two, or three of those schools, and therefore, they're going to come in, they're going to park, because they're going to be picking up students from the lower school, the middle school, and the high school. So they're, they're going to be hanging out in a parking lot, waiting for a pickup. It's, it's most usually the afternoon. Dropping off isn't so bad, but the picking up is bad. My concern still continues to be what's going to happen between June and September, that, because that's going to change the entire dynamics. If, if there's going to be a camp-type activities, then that's going to be a different, whole different operation. And, you know, this is a statement of operations for a school year, and I think that's what you were looking at when you were.
That's correct.
Doing the study. But that's not what it says here. It doesn't say anywhere that this is from September to June.
I'll let my client, you know, answer those questions when he gets an opportunity.
Thank you.
Understood. But again, going back to the traffic impact, assuming that the children are bused in the summer with the Jackson schools being closed, I think it's, there's a little bit less traffic going through the intersection. I wanted to look at the coincident time periods when this school would be generating traffic at the same time as the high school and the Switlick Elementary School. If they're. That's, that's not how it's going to work. I understand the math, okay? But not everybody is going, not all of the parents are going to be leaving at exactly, within a one or two-minute timeframe. It's going to be spaced out over 15, 20 minutes. And the space will be onsite without impacting any traffic flow on Leesville Road. It'll all be contained within the site. That's the important thing. Just, just like when 30 school buses are leaving Jackson Memorial High School, they're all queued up at one point in time, but once they start moving, in five minutes, they're, they're basically out onto Don Connor Boulevard, and they're gone.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
One more question. Any of your recommendations? Nothing is anticipating any street parking there?
Oh, absolutely not. No, yeah, you are correct. And that's why our parking has been designed to meet the town's ordinance requirements, even though we think, and perhaps your, you know, experts may agree, we may have a little bit of surplus parking. We'd rather have it.
To follow up on that, as part of your recommendations to the county, do you include a recommendation that they actually provide for no parking on Leesville Road?
We did not make that recommendation. Certainly, that is something that the township could request. The county will go along with it. If the township passes an ordinance restricting parking along Leesville Road, the county will go along with it.
Do you have an issue recommending that as well as part of the recommendation?
I don't think there's any need for it, but if it makes the township more comfortable, I guess that would have to come from the governing body, not from the planning board, but we have no problem with it. That's fine. Nope, I don't have any money on the basketball game tonight, so I'm staying here until 11, 11:30. There's no, I don't have any dog in the fight.
All right, let's take a 10-minute break.
The afternoon has additional recreation for there's arts and crafts, there is additional sport activities, songs, more recreation as opposed to studying math, English, or additional afternoon studies.
With this recreation, there are no locker rooms. There's no pool. There. That seems to limit your opportunities for physical activity. No basketball, are there basketball courts?
Yes, there will be available basketball courts.
It doesn't show on the plans though.
It's part of the recreation area. It's going to depend on each school individual needs.
Whether it's a boy's school or a girl's.
Yes, the girl's schools will have more softer sports. The men, the boy's schools will be a little bit harsher, basketball, soccer, what's that?
Not lacrosse.
Not lacrosse.
Alright, so there will be things like, like basketball.
Correct. Now with regard to locker rooms, it's extremely not, um, there, no schools want to see locker rooms. It, it comes along with some challenges and I don't think the schools want to see that. Even in this, even there's not much, there's not many organized sports, although I must say my kids do play organized sports, but they don't play in school organized sports. Um, every one of my kids play in football leagues, basketball leagues, baseball leagues, but they're usually Friday afternoons, evening times, or Saturday nights. But um, I would love to see more organized sports, but unfortunately, the schools don't have it. They try to shy away from making some sports that competitive. It brings out sometimes a little bit too much competitiveness. So they have soft sports and basketball is there for the boys and football there too, but they try to stay away from intense.
So uh, I don't know if you're equipped to answer the educational questions. I might have your more a uh, about the management side. There, yeah, there, that's.
Correct.
I got that right. So because I'm looking at the um, facilities uh, from a point of view of a former high school principal. And I see no lab science rooms uh, in the high school uh, or the middle school, uh, but particularly the high school and, and that concerns me since to get into most colleges today, you need two years of a lab science. I see no lab sciences of facilities. Is that true?
Um, I'm not that familiar with the schools, to be honest with operations. To the best of my knowledge, I don't recall any one of my kids going through labs. I have ten of them, so I could speak for my kids. But none of them came back with any lab science. I guess that would be something that if a school felt that it would be something that would be a need or it would be something that they would like to offer, I would imagine they can convert maybe one of the classrooms. I'm not sure exactly what is entailed to convert that if it needs additional safety issues. There might be fire hazard issues. Again, I don't know. I gotta be honest, I grew up, um, unfortunately, I had in my high school, I grew up, I was in high school in Philadelphia and our fire, our school burnt down from a lab science project. So, you know, just that's my only experience of lab science. It was two weeks into school.
The difficulties of any lab science, but there, it's often a required course and it does take, it takes more planning. Uh, so I'm trying to get a feeling for, and maybe you can help me with this. You're going to own the property.
Correct.
That's a for-profit company.
Correct.
You are going to rent out to either one manager or three different schools that are nonprofit organizations. Do I have that?
Um, I don't know, again, I don't know the whole non-for-profit concept and how that's, I never did anything like that with the whole non-for-profit. So with regard to my rent and the lease, that's going to be for-profit, I hope. But um, anyone else, how they run their schools and how their schools are registered, I have no idea.
So I can't ask you academic questions. I, I would have to speak to a superintendent or a principal in order to get an idea of the academics that would be going on within these buildings.
Right, but I could tell you that I, it's going to be very comparable to all the schools, to a lot of, well, the schools I'd say I have experience with, with my kids. And um, again, I don't know all the academics, but what kind of classes and what kind of scheduling and all that, I think I have a little, a little experience with that, but I can't say.
With ten of them, yes.
Yes.
But I, I have thirteen grandchildren. They're all in high school and college, so I do have that same type of experience and some of them went to private schools. Always not-for-profit, I can tell you that. I'm, I'm still so unclear as, as to the what type of safety issues, what type of like access and egress and coming in and out of buildings, but I can see that I don't think that is something you can really answer for me.
Well, I would imagine we have an architect here, so she designed the actual building, so she can probably answer those questions.
This was your last um, witness. We're going to talk to the architect?
Yeah, I said there was an architect.
Oh, okay, excellent. That, that will help because those are questions I can ask of the architect. Thank you so much.
Yes. How are you going to determine just your market? If I'm asking, are there going to be two boys schools and one girls' school? Are we all two girls' schools?
Great question, but hard to determine. It's like when you, when you build a, a retail plaza, it's, I don't want, again, once again, we're talking about it's a for-profit, so it's going to boil down to probably the numbers that are being offered, who has a greater demand. That probably changes. One thing I do know is that there's a demand for all of them. There's a demand for girls' elementary schools, girls' high schools, boys' elementary schools, boys' high schools. So I don't think it's going to be a question as whether or not I can find a tenant. The question is going to be who's the most, you know, who will pay the most money.
And, and obviously, depending on who the tenant is, obviously will affect. Obviously. Obviously, depending on who the tenant is, will affect even the transportation concerns that I think the board has brought up. If there are two schools that are able to combine transportation routes, would there be an option of, I mean, I, with, within the circular route of one bus going into one school, dropping off, which is, I know that Jackson Board of Ed has discussed, when they, when they have bus to private schools, would that be an option?
I would love to see them share things and make life easier. That would be awesome. But we do plan on having, and I've spoken to a few um, school administrators, we do plan on having each school having their own safety bus coordinator. I was talking to, to someone, um, a school that has between six and seven hundred kids. So I thought it was a very comparable type of school owner. He said to me, he has the school buses from the time the first school bus pulls in until the last school bus pulls out from kindergarten to sixth grade, takes them less than eight and a half minutes. So he said he has someone there who's the coordinator. He makes sure the kids get off the buses. There's someone who sits, stands right there, makes sure the kids get off the bus safely, get into the, get into the building and the buses move on. There's very little idle time for the buses. He's been doing this for years. Um, it's, it's called YTT, but anyway, it's a, it's a very established school and they have a very efficient running of the school. And he told me that, of course, every school needs their own bus coordinator.
Okay, and um, we mentioned before about after-school programming and was discussed how these buildings are not going to be rented out. The gym or any facility won't be rented out. Will there be after-school activities? For example, school plays, schools dramas, PTAs?
Um, I would say is there is probably a PTA and what I would suggest, and that's going to be something as part of, I guess, my operations and my management would be is that the PTAs should not all, for each school, should not be the same night as another school. So I think actually it would be great, this type of situation where you have three schools and three parking lots. And you have a scenario where if one person at one school does PTA one night, all three, all, that one school can work out where we, I can coordinate that where all three parking lots could be used for that evening if necessary. I'm not even so sure it's necessary because I do know that they stagger the PTAs too. From what I, from my experience with my kids, my sixth grader, my seventh grader, my eighth grader, they all have different times and different days. So it's going to be like, you know, sixth and seventh grade is this, these, these dates. And then it's whatever, eighth grade is a different date. So um, I think the fact that we have three parking lots side by side can actually create a much more efficient system by PTAs or kids' plays or anything like that. But there will not be any rentals to any other like halls or party halls and none of that stuff.
And just one last question. We discussed earlier about security. Will these schools be utilizing the security grants that most private schools are able to utilize?
So again, I'm not so familiar with what grants are available, but if there is anything available, let me know and I'll apply for them.
The reason why I'm asking also is being that there's one main entrance, would the, would the applicant be open to putting some form of the security guardhouse when he come in, which I have seen in other areas and other schools?
Again, I know, let's say, for example, my son's school, um, they have that guardhouse. It's just usually that big wave and you go right by, but um, I guess they started, you know, face recognition at some point. I think that was actually through a grant, if I'm not mistaken. So um, I can't say I would commit to that, but that's something that I'm assuming as schools, and I know there are grants, you're telling me there are grants available. That would be something that I would encourage greatly to have the schools apply for those grants and have this school little booth security. I think that's awesome.
Mr. Icorn, I'm, I'm trying to take notes to figure out sort of what the statement of operations were for the project. Mr. Borden just testified this evening that there'd be no outside attendance for the gymnasium.
Correct.
People wouldn't come in and utilize it. It wouldn't be rented out. You just said that we're going to have a PTA and we're going to hold plays.
That's internal, that's not being rented out. That means that the school, let's say, for example, my fifth grade, they want to have a nice, um, they work a whole year and they have some sort of play. That's for parents only, so.
So the parents, so, and, and again, I, I appreciate your straightforwardness in answering the question because it helps us determine what design standards need to be applied to the site plan that's before us. So parents will come to the school during school hours to attend a play.
I don't know exactly when they typically do the plays, but I would imagine, yes, but I can speak for that.
Okay, so then, then we'll go back to your, your site engineering, your traffic engineer to reconcile that traffic load on the site to make sure that there's enough parking on the site. So we don't end up with folks parking in unsafe places.
Those plays, those plays and those skits are usually once a year, not that often, but.
Mr. Icorn, I just, it's easier for me to cross-examine Ian because he and I are used to going back and forth. I just want to make sure that what gets on the record is clear, so that there's not an enforcement issue later. Respectfully, you're sort of like the landlord. I don't want the zoning officer to have to go after one of your tenants because Ian said one thing and you said the other. Just trying to get it as clear as possible. Not trying to beat you up over it. I just want to make sure that the testimony is clear. You had started to indicate what types of recreation may be at each of the individual schools. You got the soccer and then you got the football. Basketball, I'm sorry, basketball and then football.
Yeah, he said football.
Football came up. That's, that was the one that piqued my interest.
No, he didn't say so. He said football.
In any event, Mr. Borden got up and said there are no showers in these facilities.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Just so you should know how the operations typically work with recess and all that, our whole recess for the kids are usually between fifteen and twenty minutes at most. So it's like even the lunchtime is, they spend like fifteen or twenty minutes eating and then they have another fifteen or twenty minutes playing. They're not playing for two hours straight and coming back and needing showers and all that, but even if they were, they still wouldn't have showers.
So as it relates to the rec areas, is there any particular standard that was utilized to create these particular fenced-in areas?
What I did was I went to um, a couple of schools in Lakewood and for example, one of them, it's called Beestova, a pretty large school, more students than the six hundred students that we have in our school. And I kind of took a very good look at what their recreation areas look like, and this exceeds that.
There's not a standard. You can't tell me that there was a school that had six hundred students and they had three thousand square foot of active passive paved grass space.
There are some schools that have even a lot less than that and there's no determining factor. It's every school to their usage. Some parents and some parent body encourage more sports and some of them discourage it more. So it's hard to know the parent body.
If there's not a determining factor, that, that, that's an answer. It's, it's, the concern here is that you're asking for preliminary and final site plan approval. Someone's going to come in and say, well, I want something else. And someone in the building department or the zoning department is going to tell them they need to come back to the planning board for a site plan. And then you and your attorney and this board are going to have an issue. So to the extent we can nail this down as best we can, so there aren't any problems post-approval, the better job we will all have done. The threshold at which is, there's a change. We have this, we have a site plan drawing. So what change to that triggers that? Thank you.
We didn't know that.
Well, in this case, we're actually proposing a gym. So we have basketball, we could technically have a basketball court in the gym. Potentially if the gym may be used for other things, then potentially that can be as part of the recreation area. Also, we can have some outdoor basketball courts. Right, because we're not, we're not committing to actually putting basketball or exterior basketball courts. We're leaving it as recreation area. And based on whatever recreation that the school would want, they would have to come back and I don't know if they have to even come back for that. They would just have to provide whatever recreation they want.
Yeah, I've, I've, yeah, I would, I would agree. Um, not that they couldn't maybe handled or addressed, you know, with a um, perimeter recharge area or something, something like that, but it definitely would increase the, increase the pervious coverage. But just to, you know, you know, follow up on, on the question, is, is there going to be outdoor basketball courts?
We don't know.
Okay, so as.
That's going to depend on the school, depending what kind of recreation they want to provide.
Then it kind of goes to Ernie's point and question though, okay, well, there's a school comes in, now I want a basketball court. I want a gym outside or whatever. Well, that's not shown on the plan. You would have to come back.
What did that, I would assume that would require additional parking and I would probably have to come back in that case. Correct. We're not showing, we're just showing elementary schools for the two buildings and one high school for the third building. Don't tell my seventeen-year-old he's a minor. It'll be till twelfth grade. Nine through twelve, yeah.
You, you've stipulated that no students will be driving. That should, uh,
Correct, and that's a no-no, yeah. They're not allowed to drive. No high schools and, no, no high schools.
Another grant, the EVs uh, are, there are grants available for the EVs and your uh, you said you were going to put in two to three for each school. There are grants available for that, so make sure to apply.
Thank you. I don't know, because again, I don't know how that works with regard to the schools, but for, with regard to me, I mean, with regard to my ownership and my leasing it out, it's for-profit. So I don't know the tax, tax implications on this, but.
It may well be important, uh, it may well be important to stipulate that they are for-profit. So that they would be subject similarly from a tax perspective, just like a DeVry School per, for instance, which is a for-profit school, the Phoenix School, uh, or not, formerly nonprofit hospitals, which are now, there's a statute moving through as well that they're going to be taxed. And that has allocation issues and issues of the like. I don't know the answer quite frankly. That, that's. Well, he didn't say that at first though. He had two chances to.
He is.
He, Mr. Icorn.
I'm the owner of the property.
No, but he, he, I, I mean, we can read back the transcript at some point, but I believe Mr. Icorn's testimony was he was not sure what type of schools he would be leasing to, whether they were for or non-for-profit. And based on that testimony, you know, the board is stuck with weighing testimony and evidence as it comes in. Right? And has to deal with credibility issues a, a, and the like. So, so I put it out there now because I heard it four or five times at least in my recollection. Uh, and it's something, again, I'm sort of rephrasing uh, the chairman's question to deal with a land use statute, right? It's agreed forty fifty five, forty fifty five D sixty six is in the land use section of the statute, is it not? Of the, of the. But little bit new wrinkle here now with, in my, from what we talked about. So again, I don't even want, I'm respectfully suggesting that they need to be reconciled. That, that's all. It's unfair to you to. Yep. Mr. Carter, any question? Oh, I'm sorry.
The definition of a school according to New Jersey Department of Education is a sorry, private school is something under the public school or for education where K through twelve and a combination where a child may fulfill legally compulsory school attendance requirements, which requires with the requirements of Title Six of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four. If you're in school tonight, is it referring to a school? I mean, a school could be a lot of things for profit in school. Is this going to be in place for kids, K through twelve, where they will go there, legal attendance and?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, listening to the testimony, um, your, your group will basically be providing facilities, making some kind of financial arrangement with, with some other group. It could be three different groups that have schools. Now, one of the things I, I gathered is that the limitations have, it's related to sex, all male or female. No co-ed?
No.
Schools, okay, so that's, that's, that's out. So um, and you'll, and you'll, if you have to customize the school building, you might have to do that wherever, wherever it is. I guess whether it's a long-term relationship or a short-term, you make that decision as a business person.
Yes.
So that's basically what's happening here. Is that you're, you envision three different schools, one of them being like a high school type. The other two, I mean, is it theoretical that they could all be grammar schools?
They can all be.
Grammar schools?
Grammar schools?
Yeah, I mean, you're doing a K to eight or something because.
The first two are K to eight, right.
Now, now, just suppose the third one is never rented, sold, but that could also be a K eight too, just because, I mean, you have a vacant property, you're businessman.
But I'd probably have to come back in front of the board, I'm assuming, if I was to change it, but yeah, as of now, just to kind of flip the switch a little bit, I think right now, just to give you an example, this past year, I have a son who is graduating eighth grade, so he's looking to go into high school. And I think they gave us the list of around seventy high schools approximately. I don't remember exactly the number. And just this year, another thirteen opened up.
So you're looking.
So I don't think high schools, I think of all of them, high schools right now is the biggest demand because they don't have sixty or ninety or a hundred and twenty parallel, um, kids per grade. They typically, most high schools have maybe only two classes, parallel classes per grade. Sometimes you'll find elementary schools a lot higher numbers, like some schools have eight parallel classes in, in some of the schools in Lakewood. But you'll never find a high school that has eight parallel classes. You'll find two, I think is the max, and most of them only have one. An idea is they're trying to create a certain culture in the ninth grade high school kids as opposed to, um, I think the elementary school, which is a little bit more general.
Well, I mean, basically your own research said there's a need for a high school.
Yes.
That's why you're putting it out there.
Yes.
I'm going to snap it up soon and later.
Yes.
Uh, one more question. You just made me think, uh, you can't sell one of these schools individually. That, you would have to maintain all three of those buildings in perpetuity. The only way you could sell it would be to sell your whole business. You can't divide it up and sell them individually? That's what I'm asking.
You could either come back to the board and get a subdivision and/or you could set up a condominium association, which would need no board approval.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Chairman, just a brief, uh, non-controversial item in regard to basketball, if there's a consideration for that. I'm familiar with designs that are pervious coverage, designed, composites, that if there was some, uh, and because it ties to runoff and stormwater management, that kind of thing. So in the event that that's an issue where it's being contemplated uh, and you want to avoid coming back in the event there's an approval and then that type of thing. If it's a pervious, the newer composite.
Yeah.
Resins, I believe they are, uh, that's something that you may have your planners look at if you're putting it together to have it uh, contemplated at one time.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have a question for this gentleman? All right, um, we have a lot of people here that came in this evening that are very patient. Give them the opportunity to come up and. Thank you for your testimony. Don't, don't go away. So if anyone cares to speak about this application, could step up to the mic?
Hi, Susan Cooper from Willata Drive in Jackson.
So ma'am, thank.
Sorry.
No, it's my fault. You beat me. Uh, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And again, just, I know you just did it, but.
Susan Cooper, Willata Drive in Jackson. Willata? Okay, um, my first comment is going to be about the traffic study. Mr. Ray claimed that he didn't feel that many people would be coming from the four-way stop side. And I can tell you that's absolutely incorrect. The population has definitely changed on that side of town, especially in Whispering Hills. So I feel like not taking that into account is very um, like inappropriate at this time because there is going to be traffic coming that way. Um, and I feel like somebody did a traffic. way. And I feel like somebody did a traffic study at one point on Cross Street, I don't know who, but I'm sure that they felt that having a lot of schools in a residential area was not going to impact the traffic. We all know that Cross Street is one of the worst streets in our county, probably. It's three miles long, which is why I'm bringing it up, because Leesville is also three miles long, okay? Cross Street is filled with far more traffic than probably even Route Nine, and they probably only have maybe about fifty houses, it's hard to tell which is actually a house on that street, but there's also a lot of streets that come through Cross Street. You can turn off easily, go in another direction, okay? That road is completely unpassable during rush hour times, school opening and closing times, and into the night, which is now a situation that we are dealing with here. It used to be a very quiet country road that I traveled for ten years. I used to go from Sixty Acres in Jackson to Route Thirty Seven in Toms River in thirty minutes. I recently just turned onto Cross Street at three ten PM, and it took me nineteen minutes to get from the Route Nine side to Wawa. Okay, so that, like I said, it used to be thirty mile, thirty minutes from Sixty Acres to Route Thirty Seven in, in Toms River. And like I'm saying, somebody at some point did a traffic study on Cross Street and probably said there would be no impact on the traffic. So Leesville, as I said, is about three miles long, but on Leesville, we have many cul-de-sacs, maybe twenty-five, give or take a few, okay? Unlike Cross Street, there's not a lot of ways off of Leesville Road, okay? You can't really go around the block. If you take a different road, you're going eight, nine miles out of your way to get to where you want to go, okay? If you, we have Freehold Road, Burke Road, Diamond Road, and West Pleasant, those are pretty much only ones that you can kind of go off of Leesville to get out. These all, these roads all also have a lot of cul-de-sacs, and not to mention lots of building on every single one of them. Every single one of those roads I named has some kind of project coming up, or they're already within a project. So going those ways is not an option, so there's no having like a shortcut anywhere off Leesville. So now, if we're looking at these twenty-five or so Leesville cul-de-sacs, we're looking at at least over two hundred and fifty houses, and I actually did this on Google, so my numbers could be a little bit off, but not much. Plus, we have about three hundred houses in Whispering Hill, and probably about a hundred just on Leesville, okay? And then with those other streets that I talked about that do branch out, there's probably about a thousand houses on those, maybe under the number. So if you take all these houses and you multiply that at least by two cars, okay? And then some houses have three to four cars. There's even some houses in this area that have sixteen cars. Now, you're going to take into account all of these buses and cars and vans that are going to these three schools, and God forbid, the other schools that are proposed for down the street, then just forget it, okay? Take into account the staff vehicles, the food delivery, the garbage trucks, plus the multitude of parents driving their kids to school, okay? Then take into account the vans and other private transportation. We are all in Jackson very aware of the board meetings and the situation where parents are saying that they have to drive their kids to school because there is a shortage of buses. So I'm not really sure where this five percent is coming from, and I also don't know how they can even make an estimate as to who's driving if they don't even know what students are going to be in the school yet. It could be a hundred percent of kids that are going to be driven, you do not know, okay? I work at a school that has less than six hundred students. We also have walkers, which this school will not have walkers. We have at least one hundred parents driving kids in every single day, even more when it's rainy, cold, or snowing, okay? And bus duty is not eight minutes, I have it every morning, I stand out there from eight forty to eight fifty-five in the snow, in the rain, freezing. There's no school anywhere at the eight minutes, I would like to see that, okay? So now, you're going to add up all these numbers of all these kids that don't have buses, that are coming in vans, coming with parents, plus the staff, plus whatever, plus everybody that lives on Leesville Road trying to go, you know, towards Lakewood or towards Freehold, whichever way you're going, okay? We're talking closely ten thousand cars, let's be honest, okay? I don't know what traffic study is saying anything different than leaving this, but this is the fact, okay? Now, we're going to add in the high school, even though it's staggered times, you have people that go in early, you have kids being tutored, take into account also Switlick, the township buildings, there's a lot of people that work here, okay? The dump, the residents that live on Don Connor, everybody that works at the police station, the residents from Castle area, Bennett's Mills, Veterans, Cedar Swamp, I mean, come on, this, this is going to be insane, okay? Can you imagine what this nice little quiet three-mile street will be like? And a lot of parents will realize, oh, if I come up West Veterans, it can be crazy, I'm gonna go, you know, down Cedar Swamp to Diamond, and I'm going to cut up Leesville. That's going to happen. It's going to just be absolute chaos, okay? And the four-way stop, people don't know how to use it now, like, no offense, but can you just imagine hundreds and hundreds of people going that way at the same time, in a rush, teachers are late, people can't get out, they're stressing out, it's, it's going to be crazy, okay? And the, the worst thing about the cul-de-sacs, okay, we're going to be trapped. I live on a cul-de-sac in, right off of Leesville. Where, where are we going when all these lines of cars and buses and vans are all lined up? We're not going to be able to get out of our streets, we have no other way out, okay? What if there's a medical emergency? Or Mr. Fleming, what if there's a fire down on Craig Ward or Toshi at, I don't know, eight o'clock in the morning? What if there's a fire, and all of these buses and cars and people going to work and staff and food are all online? How are the fire trucks getting Yeah, but, no, no, but honestly, like, there's, there's nowhere to go. There's hardly any shoulders, there's, I mean, honestly. But, oh, I understand that. Right, but I'm taking, we take into account how crowded this road is going to be with very little shoulders on that street. There's ditches on one side, trees on the other, and if you have two lines of cars going both ways, I'm not sure how a fire truck would fit in there. I mean, maybe it can, but, I mean, I'm just being realistic for the safety of us residents, okay? Or a medical emergency. Maybe, you know, somebody's having a medical emergency or a car accident, and nobody's going to get through because nobody's going to move. People are rude. They don't follow the law as it is now, and it's a very narrow area, okay? And like I said, those of us in, in cul-de-sacs, we're not even going to be able to get out of our street, okay? And then, also, in this whole area, we're talking about, you know, these buses going midnight, ten thirty at night, nine thirty at night, it's just going to be constant, six days a week, twelve months a year, you know, this, this is a residential area. These roads were not even built to handle this kind of damage. I mean, the roads will, like, I just can't even imagine. And then take into account the pollution, okay? All of these cars, six days a week, idling on Leesville, or wherever trying to turn, make a left, make a right, whatever. What about the diesel fuel pollution? Okay, we all have wells. There's people that live right next to that yellow line, they have wells, okay? What type of environmental protection studies have been done outside of this? Like, have they looked at everybody that lives on that street? If all these buses are there, and all of these cars idling, have they, has there been an environmental study that's looked at this? With these, the fuel, the gashes, the emissions, what it's going to do to the water table? We all have wells in this area, okay? The Toms River Tributary is right behind the school, okay? What is the air and ground pollution going to do to that water resource? Is there a study on this? I mean, this is something that affects everybody. We drink this water, we cook with that water, we give it to our kids, our pets, ourselves, and we know that water flowing over pavement exposes water to pollutants, surface debris, and asphalt. The polluted water will eventually flow into wells and sewage networks, which empty into lakes, rivers, and streams, and how are all of us in this area with our wells being protected? And I think beyond just looking at the site and how the buses come in, that needs to be looked out. Like, it can't be looked at as in a bubble. This has an environmental effect on all of us in the area. I mean, the Clean Water Act, we have to look at that and how everybody is entitled to having, you know, clean water and high standard of water quality in surface and groundwaterers, okay? And especially the, the CWA also recognizes the importance of wetlands, which I believe where the tributary is, that is classified as wetlands, okay? Traffic affects water, that's a fact, okay? Road construction and maintenance affects water, pollutants such as vehicle exhaust, oil and dirt, de-icing chemicals being deposited to the roadway and other surfaces, all of this added traffic, which I know some people don't believe there's going to be, but there's going to be a ton of extra traffic. This is going to adversely affect the residents of Leesville Road and the surrounding. The runoff from the runways and parking lots, they're going to cause increased pollutants to wetlands and streams. The construction that's going to go on will also contribute to increased erosion, which will also runoff into water supplies. What about all the people that live next to the site? I don't think that their safety is being taken into, into account here, okay? Pollutants from transportation take two forms, either directly leaked right into the natural water system, or they're airborne and deposited. Exhaust fumes, copper from brake pads, tire and asphalt wear deposits, drips of oil, grease, antifreeze, hydraulic fluids, and cleaning agents, okay? All this increased development.
Can I just pause you for a second?
Yeah.
You've been going on for about ten minutes now. I'd like to get a show of hands, and who else would like to speak about this application this evening? I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak, you know, and seeing the hour, I, I don't want one person.
Okay, can I just ask one question then?
Sure.
Okay, so as far as this school, I'm, I'm assuming that there will be students in this school with IEPs? Are there going to be students getting grants for state, like, would state aid help? Because I know that New Jersey has a state requirement for the size of schools. An elementary school must be built on five acres, plus an acre for every one hundred pupils. A high school must have twenty acres with an additional acre for every one hundred pupils. And despite this being a private school, thirteen acres is illegal by state standards. St. Owles and St. Rose, they, they're private schools, but had to adhere to the state site limits. Private schools are required to follow the same rules and regulations, it's known as a community safety plan, and the Jackson Board of Ed is supposed to know about this, so that's something that could just be taken into consideration. So, but as somebody that, like I said, lives in this area, I feel that this is a danger to the safety and health of all of us that live in that area. I am not against the schools, I'm a teacher, I'd have no problem if the school was not in a residential area. If it was on County Line Road or somewhere more appropriate with double lanes and more safe area, would, it would be better for the kids and more space is spread out. I would have no problem with that, but it does not belong on a residential street where it's going to cause a huge effect on our livelihood and possible health and safety. Thank you.
Eleanor Hanam, Jackson, New Jersey.
Hang on, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear, affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I know you just did it, but can you give us your name, spell your last, and your address?
Eleanor Hanam, H A N N U M.
And your address, please?
Jackson, New Jersey. I, I have a question regarding each particular school. So is, does each school state how many classrooms are in them?
We haven't gotten to the architect's testimony yet, so we'll reserve, I would ask that the applicant take note of the question.
Okay, and as far as safety concerns, I heard testimony regarding utilizing a pallet jack to go in through the front door to unload product and food. You know, there's social regulations when it comes to children and using a pallet jack, and I don't know if this would qualify, that you can do that when there's children around. As far as the compactor area, is that fenced in? Okay, so then it's fenced in, and it's going to be gated with a security lock?
Yeah.
Okay. And as far as these schools are concerned, are they going to accommodate special
I don't think they have that. They don't even know whether it's going to be males or females.
Okay, because if they are accommodating special education students, there's ADA requirements, and my other question to that, will these schools have an elevator to accommodate Okay. And I guess it wasn't very clear, because there was questioning for quite a long time regarding the times in the, the September to June, and if it was, there was going to be summer camp and everything else. And then when Mr. Einhorn got up to testify, he then, in fact, clarified that it's going to be twelve months out of the year. So this facility is going to be used, not just during school hours, but throughout the entire summer. You're aware that Jackson Memorial will be hosting all the recreation, or summer rec students, so there might be some conflict with moving those kids throughout the town to Jackson Memorial over the summer and this site when it comes to traffic. Also, I am a high school teacher, and, you know, I find it very questionable when we're talking about start times and, and getting the, loading the kids and unloading the kids. There is no way, there, those kids, that bell rings three o'clock, and those kids in eight minutes are out. There is no way. I have never seen it. I know, at my high school, if you don't get out before those buses, you're going to sit in that for twenty-five minutes. So now, you have a three o'clock end time that's going to be now competing with Switlick School getting out because they get out at three thirty. And you also have a situation with the seven forty competing with Jackson Memorial that starts at seven twenty-six. So I, I, I find that testimony a little bit questionable when it comes to times. My other concern is when we talk about the ingress and the egress, and I could be completely wrong, but I, I'm assuming the traffic wants to do a left-hand turn coming this way on Leesville?
This way being north, toward north, towards Freehold?
Uh, no, well, no, coming, say if you're coming up Leesville going towards Jackson Memorial.
That's south, okay.
Okay, so he's proposing a left-hand turn? Is that what he was saying? I kind of got lost in the whole mix. Okay, so he's proposing a left-hand turn. What are they doing for the businesses that are directly across the street? Because now, this has got a financial impact on those, those two, those businesses. You know, everything's to, on the roadway is to accommodate the school, but what about these business owners that are a foundation here, and the impact they're going to have on, on them? So I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Because I can tell you, when I take my grandchildren to, four boys, to get ice cream, you, I make a right. You can't even see the cars coming to the left. It's so bad. So that whole situation needs to be cleared up. My other comment is regarding the safety. The safety officers, I think you, was being discussed. According to New Jersey regulation, for the Department of Education and Governor Murphy two years ago just increased the amount, the Jackson Board of Ed is to provide security services, equipment, and technology. So it will be our responsibility to provide that. Therefore, if that is being provided, there must be an area for those security officers within that building. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for approaching and raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
First name is Dawn, last name's Slay, S is in Sam, L A Y, ninety-three Leesville Road. Forgive me, I'm all over the place because you went over a lot of stuff that was said in November. My first question is, I have, or statement, I have spoken to the Ochi County Engineer Office myself. Mr. Jenke there informed me that there were nineteen outstanding comments or items that needed to be addressed. In everything that was discussed tonight, have they, were they part of that nineteen item list that the county is requiring from the planner, owner, from Jackson Township, as far as the traffic study, the light, the whole intersection?
Mr. Ray, are you aware of anything?
Is there a list that is available to the public to see what exactly those items are that the county is requiring for that intersection as far as, you know, the left-turn lane, the right-turn lane, the light, drainage? There's no list?
Mr. Chairman, I asked for a copy of that list for the board. I'd be interested to know if they have any opinion on the left turn and the other items. Maybe it's all in there, unless there are professionals have it already.
And typically, when they go to the county.
And typically when they go to the county, they'll come up with a little laundry list of things they need. They're actually maybe deem the application complete. And that's, you know, written down, I would think would be public, you know, information.
Are you on the service list for that or no? Or would that be just applicant-oriented?
If the firm submitted an application to the county planning board, we'd go through the same processes as any other applicant. But there is a list, you're either deemed complete for a meeting, or these are the things that needed to be addressed. It sounds like there's 19 items that the county's coming up with before they get to the actual planning board meeting.
Can you get that list, please?
Yes.
Is that something that you, as a planning board, would address before making a decision? As to whether or not you're approving or not approving, you know what I mean? Before it goes to the county?
That would be the county's comments, that, you know, county's concern. They're mostly concerned about Leesville or the intersection. That's, you know.
Okay. Also, the county has told me that it is up to Jackson Township to address the speed limit on Leesville Road. As you know, from this end of Leesville to Freehold, it's 45 and then it drops to 40. Are there any plans for the speed limit to be dropped at this end of Leesville, should the school be approved?
That, I don't know, that's not under this board's review.
Well, who would take care of that? Because I was advised by the county that is from this board.
That is in conjunction with the police department and the township council, I would imagine.
I would have determined that, you know, that would come from the council as a recommendation or request to the county.
The county said it's up to Jackson to lower the speed limit? That they have nothing to do with lowering the speed limit?
So I think, ma'am, the answer is, though, it's not this board's land use purview to make that determination. Ultimately, the municipality,
Okay.
the governing body has to make that
Okay.
request. Similar, by the way, to the, with regard to, remember the issue of no parking along Leesville Road? While Mr. Ray indicated that he would have no objection to including that as a suggestion, ultimately, the determination and request would come to the, have to come through the governing body.
Personally, as a runner, I would prefer that those signs be put up, no parking on Leesville, because I've taken my life in my hands many times on Leesville running. But that's a story for another day. Can we just clarify where the entrance to the school is in relationship to the exit for Manja?
Mr. Ray, can you do your best?
I'm just a little, you know, sitting back there, I can't even see where it is on the screen.
Somebody. And I'm sorry, Mr. Borden.
I think that, Mr. Borden, I think Mr. Ray should take care of this, not a plan.
It's on the cycle. It's on the exhibit.
I look at it where it's offset about 75. Approximately 75.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I'm not an engineer and I don't understand your drawings. I'm a resident of this town and I'm extremely concerned about this intersection and getting creamed going through it to go to work at the high school.
So am I.
Okay, so I have almost gotten hit many times. My children have almost gotten hit coming out of Quick Check, coming out of the Manja Plaza. That's the reason why I ask, where is the entrance? Is, that's it exactly across the street?
Ray, do you have? Ma'am? Hold on, one at a time. Mr. Borden, I have a seat. Mr. Ray, do you have a point? Do you have a pointer? Okay. Go ahead.
My new way.
All right, there you go. There's the driveway from the strip center. There's our driveway there, offset approximately 75 feet center line to center line.
And you're proposing a center turn lane?
Yes.
One lane to go into the school and then to continue to go into Quick Check? Am I understanding that correctly?
Quick Check already has a left turn lane.
Okay, last time I thought you said also that there was going to be a dedicated right turn lane into Quick Check and a dedicated right turn lane into the school.
A dedicated right turn lane into the school.
Coming from the light, I mean.
Yes, a dedicated right turn lane going into the school. Yes. And a dedicated, and a dedicated left turn lane.
Okay. And my question to the board is, has anyone spoken to or gotten any reports from the Jackson Police Station in reference to the number of accidents that have already happened at this intersection? Between coming out of Quick Check, Manja?
We don't solicit the police department to have information. The applicant, the traffic person does.
Isn't that information that we should take into consideration before? Before adding additional cars and school buses full of children?
As part of any application to this board, we're required to submit to the police department. We did so, we have not received any comments.
Okay, and I just, also, Mr. Borden, at the last meeting in November, you had testified that the the hours of the school would be K to 3, 9:15 to 3:00 P.M. And then grades four and up would begin 8:30 till 4:00 P.M. And then the high school would run 8:45 to 4:30 P.M. I'm just a little lost in where November, between November and now, it's now a high school that's going to run and end at 9:30. And now the hours for the middle school and the the middle school and high school have been pushed back to 7:30, 7:40.
As I explained in my testimony, we had met, when my client and I met, and we adjusted the start times. In part in an effort to ensure the staggering of times with the public schools. But I had already testified that we had changed the times.
Let me clarify that a little, if I may. If I'm incorrect, again, let's make sure the record is clear. Thought I also heard testimony, either through you, Mr. Borden, from the applicant or the applicant himself. The applicant had agreed to have some sort of, what is it, traffic monitor or traffic consultant to continually review and adjust those times to ensure no conflict?
Each, each school would have a traffic coordinator on site, yes.
And that that, those individual traffic coordinators report to the site manager? And that site manager would work with, you know, this Board of Education and traffic safety to continue to ensure no conflict?
Yes.
I just have to say, if you, I invite everybody here. You want to pull into my driveway and try and back out between 7:00 and 7:30 in the morning, be my guest? Because it's not going to happen. Traffic slows to a crawl from my house, 93 Leesville, through the intersection to the high school. And I know you're only concerned up to the light, but that traffic is stop, crawl, stop, crawl for as long as that light turns. Till it turns green again. I realize that all children deserve an education. But my husband and I are voicing our strong opposition to the location of this school. The, we moved to our house 32 years ago and I said last time I was here, it was a stop sign. Then it went to a light, you've added Quick Check, you've added, you know, the Manja Plaza was remodeled and there's one way in and one way out on Leesville Road. You've added CVS and the additional building here for the municipal building. I just think the traffic is going to be an additional nightmare from what it is now in the morning and in the afternoon. And I really wish this board would take into consideration the residents that live on Leesville Road and that will be impacted by the additional traffic, the truck traffic, the bus traffic, the car traffic on Leesville Road. I won't even be able to sit out at my pool in the summer if the buses are running Sunday through Thursday until 10:30 at night. And I really think that that is inconsiderate for the board not to take that into advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Tina Kowalski, K.O.W.A.L.E.S.K.I., Jackson, New Jersey. I just have a couple comments or questions, okay? Dr. Campbell, you keep, in the beginning, you kept referring to the garbage and the trash drop, the garbage compactor holding 600 students worth of garbage. Reality, there's three schools, so there's over, over 1,400 kids with their garbage every day. Over, there's got to be at least 500 people worth of staff on there. So we're talking close to 2,000 meals being delivered a day. Has anybody taken that into consideration? Also, when we kept talking, when you guys kept speaking about the traffic, you kept referring to one school with 600 students. There's three schools there with a total of over 1,400 students.
Let, let me answer it instead of going on to the next thing. I did point out that there were three schools with a great deal of trash coming from catered meals. And that, and I think Mr. Borden agreed, that we, that they would put trash areas behind each of those other two schools to accommodate that, what we thought was too much trash going on in, going over to that far right location.
Okay, I apologize.
So we did, yes.
I might have missed that.
We did address that.
Okay, also, the state size of property for schools since they're using them as schools, that hasn't been answered yet. Whereas the elementary schools need five acres plus an acre or whatever for each 100 kids after that. And the high school needs the 20 acres. Has that been addressed yet?
I believe that that refers to public schools. I don't believe it refers to private schools. Maybe.
It does. If it's being classified as school property, it does. They have to meet the state minimums as well. Okay. Also, they keep saying that during the summer months, there's going to be less traffic. I grew up in Jackson, started driving in Jackson, was from Whitesville area. My first job was Great Adventure, which is totally across town. I drove Leesville Road. Most of the kids that get a job for Great Adventure during the summer is coming from Whitesville area, that side of Jackson, driving, new students, and they're dealing with all the traffic from people rushing in and out of the schools. I just wanted to make that point. Also, it was just a shock to me that the woman told us that being Governor Murphy said that if it's a school or whatever, we have to pay? The Board of Education has to pay for security? Does that mean my taxes are paying for a private school security? That is going to cause such an impact on my daily life, driving up and down the road and going home to my house? And I have to pay for security for their schools? Even though it's a private school and somebody else is collecting money on it?
So the purpose of the statute that I keep hammering away with the profit and nonprofit and the like also respectfully addresses that point. If there's a state mandate that a Board of Education provide X to both public and private schools, that's the reason for the statute that I'm talking about, that this board, as a land use board, cannot discriminate and use that point as a basis to deny the school. So to start, I admit, I mean, to be fair to you, so I admit that my answer is like at 45 degrees to your question. I admit. But, but the issue is that from a land use perspective, because we are told by the statute not to discriminate between private and public schools, the fact that the state may or may not, presuming that articulation is correct, and I'm not sure it is, I haven't had the time to verify that. But presuming for the point of the question that it is, that cannot be a basis to deny or question the school based on that same statute that I'm hammering for another point.
Okay.
Okay.
And my next question, being that the traffic is going to be so backed up, if we approve this building, which I was, worked at a school in Lakewood for 25 years, I'm not against the school. It's just a bad spot to have a school. Once we see, because it's not going to be if, it's when we see all the traffic and how backed up it is and how hard it is to drive and how many accidents are going to be, what are the repercussions that we can take to avoid all this? Well, stop it after it started.
So I'm going to take a shot at this, if folks don't mind. And Mr. Ray, I'm hopefully going to put a smile on your face because you've heard me articulate this before. There's no doubt that this board, particularly the zoning board and the council, quite frankly, have continually been disappointed with the county's lack of foresight over the growth and development along its county roads. Right? You've heard the, this particular applicant articulate that it is, it is willing to make certain recommendations, specific recommendations to the county to provide for what it believes based on its, Mr. Ray's particularly testimony, make those recommendations to a point where for some reason the county doesn't, does not approve those suggested improvements, they would have to come back because it is a basis of the totality of their, you know, of their, of their application. Again, respectfully, that's a 45-degree answer to your question. To some extent, at the end of the day, that's a political, small p, political determination to the county representatives to be more attentive to this municipality's needs as it continues to grow, grow and develop.
Okay, also, as we see on their plans, there is one exit and one entrance only. Every school in Jackson has at least two. If there's an emergency and there's parents rushing out and emergency vehicles rushing in, how is that going to?
So, so there's an answer to that. Ms. Jennings would say, but if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Borden, can you just articulate that again?
We added the burn, we added the emergency access for that reason.
Can you point to that, if you don't mind?
The shaded. We added the emergency access at the direction of the board from the last meeting. And that's that shaded road to the top of Exhibit E.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I was sitting in the back and you can't see any of that.
That's fine.
So there is going to be two exits?
Well, it's one entrance used for the public. The shaded one is only used for emergency vehicles.
Okay. And if it was to be found out that the state size minimums are regardless of whether it's private school or states or public schools, it'll be addressed?
Again, that's hypothetical, I can't go beyond because it's my understanding it doesn't apply to private schools.
It just simply does not apply.
But if someone can provide, you know, that's another opportunity, I guess, Mr. Chairman. And I think it's always important, particularly in applications where members of the public are here, I have a, I feel I have a public obligation to articulate this. This, again, is one of the places where sometimes folks don't recognize, again respectfully, I don't mean to talk down, if I am, I don't mean to do that, that this is not, this body is not a political body. It's a quasi-judicial body that attempts to obtain evidence neutrally and render determinations based on the law as it, as it understands it. So to direct, unlike a political body like the Town Council or the Board of Commissioners, you know, the old Freeholders Board and the like, so that, for instance, that particular comment had, that's why oftentimes members of the public, we euphemistically call them objectors, a member of the public doesn't necessarily have to object. They may well be wanting to just offer independent facts. But those facts, to some extent, while I have an obligation, since it's been raised more than once, to verify that, I think for the board to inform it legally, that's also why some, that, instead of just articulating it just like in a courtroom where you have to present evidence to that fact, it's important to give us the site, give us, so that we can verify from a legal perspective and balance and, and apply that testimony and evidence to fact.
Okay, well, I just found out tonight, so I am going to research it.
And we will do the same thing. I can make that, I'll make that obligation, that's my obligation to the board. But just again, and again, I'm sure more people than I perceive understand that difference, but it was an opportunity to put it on the record.
Okay, I just want to reiterate one more time about how many students are going to be getting their license and driving in all this traffic that while they're got their permit, they're not used to it, they're not used to the school buses, they're not going to use to all the extra traffic that's going to be here. I just want you to take that into consideration for the area that they're planning to put this school in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name, last, spell your last.
Patricia Kurau, K-U-R-A-U, West Veterans Highway. I have a question about enrollment. Um. So it says building one and two both have six hundred students and then three is two hundred and fifty-five. Where are these enrollment numbers coming from? Because clearly building three, well, clearly all these buildings could um serve as a lot more students than that. How are you? How can you guarantee that the amount of students will be that number once the school's open?
So we addressed that during direct testimony. The number of students is not just related to the building size, but to the parking requirements.
Right.
And so we meet the parking requirements, we really would, we'd have to come back to this board and ask for relief or expand the parking area, which I don't really think there's room for, so we're limited. Uh, and the board, if they were to grant an approval, would say that these are subject to these limitations.
And that is, that is something that could be enforced after the schools are built?
Yes, absolutely.
Um. Well, I guess that answers that, but, um, I mean, I, I, are there um classrooms in the basement? I haven't seen the plans.
Yeah, we have not yet gotten to the architectural testimony, but they'll go through that.
Okay, well, I was asking because I haven't seen, I just didn't know if, um, they had access, um, to leave the basement for, for emergency purposes, would you have to come back up through the building?
Again, we just have to wait for the right witness to come up and testify to that, so just save that question.
Okay. Um, that's, it's, and other than, um, the emergency lane, um, if you scoot over, I don't know how a fire truck can exit off of it, there's no, like, design wise. Or how it could even, like, leave. Like, there's no radius.
She'd like to see the whole, um, I think he's out in the back there, hold on a second. Anthony? Just want you to adjust the picture if you could, they wanna see the whole emergency access, please.
Yeah, like, how could a fire truck go up that lane and then exit? Would they have to come straight through the one lane?
We, we did auto turn templates on it for a fire vehicle to show who could make those turns.
A fire truck could make that turn out of there?
Yes. I remind that we received approval from the Fire District as well.
Okay, that's all I have. I'm just concerned about enrollment size, um, being enforced because that the plan, the whole plan design is based on enrollment size, it would be important.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Certainly. Maria Amador, A M A D O R. I live at nineteen, Arrowshead Circle in Jackson. Good evening to the board, council. Um, I moved to Jackson in August of two thousand eighteen from North Edison area, South Plainfield. My commute to work, which was eight miles, took me thirty to thirty-five minutes each way. Um. What attracted me to Jackson was that it was quiet, it was clean, and it was peaceful. It was rid of the noise and pollution that was part of my daily life. You can close your eyes and you could breathe. Currently, we have three schools proposed by Quick Check. And in an article that I read, there are four more proposed for By the Whispering Hills development. I don't, I'm not sure if an application has been submitted, but that is in the works. I, everything I've heard tonight is just about the three schools, and I don't think you could look at this in a vacuum. Jackson is a hundred square miles. We are currently looking at putting potentially three to seven schools in two point five miles of a hundred square mile township. If, you, you can't look at it in a vacuum. I've heard the site plans, I've heard the traffic studies. You're not considering anything else. It's a two-lane road with no sidewalks, no shoulder. You're dealing with commuters and working people going to the high school, new drivers every morning that are gonna presented with traffic that I wouldn't wanna be in, even coming from North Edison. Um, and as far as, there was a, a comment, um, about the hours of the high school, I was shocked by hearing that tonight. Um, I live in a cul-de-sac, buses come through. There's gonna be noise pollution that I'm not accustomed to at ten o'clock at night on Sunday nights. I have children. I have an elderly parent that lives with me. Um, you have to draw a line, I think, at some point when you realize how much of this is a budding residential areas that have only one way out of their streets, which another resident mentioned. Um, also, I went to high school, public high school in Colonia, New Jersey, and I was involved in sports, many activities. And the buses brought us back to the high school and our parents picked us up and brought us home. We were not being bussed home at nine or ten o'clock at night in our communities. That is a huge concern. Jackson is a rural area. It is not a city, it is not an urban center. Um, and I don't think we cannot take into consideration the additional developments that's being proposed up the road, two and a half miles from this site. Um. The other issue is, are there plans to widen Leesville Road? And what cost is that gonna be? The busing to the private schools, what cost is that gonna be? Cause according to New Jersey law, I believes, believe the townships have to pay, whether for public or private. I'd just like to have an estimate. If you were to approve three or seven schools, what is the cost gonna be to me as a taxpayer in Jackson? Are my taxes gonna go up five thousand dollars one year, ten thousand? Like it's happened in other parts of New Jersey, like Hunterdon County, where when you looked at a house, the taxes were only gonna be five thousand dollars, and then when they built the schools and everything else, your taxes were twenty thousand dollars. So these are all considerations for everyday residents of the township. And sometimes too much of a good thing is too much. I'm not against there being schools. Schools are a good thing. I just think too much sometimes is too much, and I think it's an unjust consideration to put this many schools on one road in such a large township. There's other schools. Is it because the road is zoned for, for schools? There's other schools, there's six other elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools. Are you telling me this is the only road that schools can go on? And instead of three schools, maybe put one? The one way in, the one way out. I mean, when there's an emergency, it's scary. Everyone in these, these homes around these developments, the schools, they have well water and septic. Is that gonna be impacted? Am I gonna be looking at thousands of dollars in costs because my well or the aquifers were contaminated by this construction? Everything else that was built here has been here for decades. So. This is the first time I've ever spoken before, spoken before a board, so I'm nervous, but, and I just feel it's my civic duty to get up here and just express how a normal resident who works and who has a long commute and who came from a very populated area, doesn't wanna see this happening down here. All in one road just doesn't make sense. And I think the traffic study was begun in twenty twenty-one, which is the height of the pandemic, and everyone in my cul-de-sac was working from home. So I understand it's going out many years, but the initial year you looked at was not normal traffic. So I think that's it, but thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Um, all right, we got a couple more. It's getting late. And there will be another hearing?
Yes.
Elaine Kowalski.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski, I apologize, a little too fast. Again, I, I'm too slow, I should say. So thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Elaine Kowalski, K O W A L S K I, Jackson, New Jersey. Um, I guess I just, um, I'm not against the schools, um, it seems a bit large. And, um, I'd like to kind of address it to Mr. Ray. I really don't understand, um, how that would not be an impact. Um, he was talking about the left turn lane coming in. I'd like to know how all the cars or the buses that are coming out are gonna make a left towards the traffic light. It, you know, you have the Manjas, um, strip mall there, their driveway, and then seventy-five feet, you have a left turning in and a left turning out. So how does that all gel?
That, that's all been factored into the traffic study, and that, in fact, is why I've recommended improvements not only to the site access to provide separate left and right turn lanes into the property, but an additional off-site improvement to the intersection down at Quick Check at Veterans in Leesville, adding the left turn arrow for the southbound movement and adding a northbound right turn lane. That's why we do traffic studies to account for the impact, and if improvements are necessary, to make recommendations for those improvements.
Okay, here's what I'm addressing.
By, by providing separate left turn lanes for traffic entering and a right turn lane for traffic entering from the south. That's, that's why we recommended separate left and right turn lanes.
You're recommending it, but there won't be a traffic light, or how, how are the cars gonna know? I mean, they're just they're just gonna be, it's looking for a problem right in that area. You have two left turns coming right at each other and in a big volume, ten, twenty, thirty, forty vehicles coming out.
I, I, I can only tell you it's all been accounted for in the traffic study, and that's why recommendations were made. And, uh, the county will make us follow through on those recommendations, in my opinion.
Okay. I have to say, I've been in Jackson for forty-five years, and I've been down Leesville Road a million times. So I'm a little bit familiar with the area.
I've, I've been doing traffic work in Jackson for, since nineteen eighty-five, so I'm, I'm a little familiar to, perhaps not as much as you, but thirty-seven years.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to, just to clarify, are these recommendations funded by, by a developer's agreement? And funded by the applicant, or is it a recommendation for the county to consider in a capital improvement budget?
That's a great question.
Any improvements that were required to do per Mr. Ray's recommendations are a hundred percent funded by the developer.
Okay.
There's no public cost.
So be developer's agreement?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, let's make sure, even the intersection?
Yes.
Or is that a contribution piece?
No, that's a requirement of the developer.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'm a little unclear, I did not attend the first meeting, so, um, when the owner spoke, um, he said he's for profit and that he was gonna be renting and leasing to a tenant. Now, is it like a strip mall where he can just put anything that goes there? Is it? If, maybe it's not gonna be a school because it's just proposed? Um, what are the types of occupants that could go into that area if it's just proposed?
No, no, it's proposed for schools because you have parking requirements depending on what kind of uses in the building. And so those parking requirements that we have laid out are for schools. So if we were to change it, uh, we would have to demonstrate that we meet the parking requirements. Um, and I, I mean.
So if you did change your use, you'd have to come before the board?
Uh, we first go to the zoning, like, I mean, I don't know what the use could be, so I guess if there was a use that met that parking requirement, I could get a zoning permit. But, uh, my guess is if it's a complete change, you probably, that this site's not gonna work for a different kind of use. This is very specific to schools.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, one more, come on up, Phil. Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Kinda give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
Jeffrey Tripp, T R I P P, fifty-five Leesville Road in Jackson. I have a question regarding the emergency fire road. I own the property next door, my wife and I. It appears now that from this drawing that there's gonna be no boundary, no, no, uh, dividing line between us, boundary of trees, buffer zones, I guess is a better word. It appears to me that, that that road is gonna be virtually right on the property line. Is that correct? Can you blow that up so we can see that, or is this just a proposed? And what are the dimensions? How many feet away from the property line is that road going to be?
That's a great question. That's a great question. Anthony, can that be, uh, expanded? Mr. Borden, wanna comment on the setbacks?
There's that.
I'm just trying to answer.
Sorry.
Could you zoom back out of this, please, Anthony? Up, up, up in near the.
Right there.
Uh, up near Leesville Road, the separation is about five feet from the property line to the edge of the emergency drive. Far away, it's tapers, five feet. And farther back, it's about fifteen feet in this area by the second.
So whatever trees I have, have that buffer zone, I'm not lose.
Well, any, any trees on your property will not be disturbed.
Okay. On my property.
That's correct.
But there's, there is done. We're virtually on the property.
We are not proposing to save any trees on our side of the property in that area. That's correct.
Mr. Cle, what, what kind of setbacks?
Yeah. You can put a, an emergency fire road back close to my property?
Yes.
Well, sir, sir, hang on, the chairman just asked, uh, Mr. Cle, that very same.
Cause it's an emergency, I don't think it's regulated. If it was, um, a driveway, paved driveway, that's, you know, going to always be used, there are certain standards, I'd be ten feet off the, um, the property line. For an emergency situation or emergency configuration, I don't think there's a regulation really controls it, five feet, ten feet, fifteen feet.
The emergency access road recall is, or maybe I didn't, uh, not recall, just to be clear, uh, the emergency access road is grasscrete, it's a product, it's a firm uh grid base, but it will have a grass appearance. So visually it will be grass, but it will be a stable base sign for use by a vehicle.
Would any trees that are there now are gone?
That's correct.
Basically, what you're saying is, whatever trees are on your side, um, you're, I will lose that buffer. So you'll, you go right, you can go right up to my property.
That's correct. All the trees on our property will remove in that area. That's correct.
And that's a state requirement? That emergency?
No, we asked for it because we were concerned about this, um, only one entrance and exit to this property. Um, so we asked them to look for an alternative to give us a separate emergency exit entrance into the property. I had no idea until you just brought it up that it's right on the property line, or five feet off. And I feel for you, I mean, I'm sure it's heavily wooded right now, correct?
Well, I'm basically on, uh, side where the school's gonna be. Pretty much whatever trees are there, the, the properties, when you're looking at that, you can see the properties are actually kind of an angled. The tree line pretty much follows that. Uh, but maybe in, I'd say, at some point, less. But I just understand how you can go right, put, put a road in right dead against my property. There has to be some kind of setback. I've gotta have some kind of privacy.
I understand.
I have a residential home there, I do park my equipment there. But clearing all that out, maybe if I end up with ten or fifteen feet of trees, what's that, two or three trees deep?
Let, let the record be clear that your property is zoned, neighborhood commercial, and you described it as a residential use, but in fact, your property is a heavy equipment repair facility.
It's not, uh, it's not a heavy equipment repair facility.
Well, I'll take a picture of it and we can show it to the board. It is a truck repair facility.
I do not, they, I don't.
It has never received an approval from this township for the use that you have there.
Well, all right, so that issue's not really, that is, yeah, that, and, and, thank you, Ms. Jennings, so that particular issue's not before the board. I think what is important, and maybe again, since there's gonna be another hearing, Mr. Cle can certainly reconcile the fact that this gentleman's property is zoned, neighborhood commercial. Um, uh, but perhaps there's some ideas about how to soften. I, I know you indicated. But perhaps there's some ideas about how to soften, I, I know you indicated that they're grass pavers, my words, not yours particularly, maybe, oh, go ahead, sorry.
But give me credit where credit's due, Peter's pointed out, couldn't we just pull the whole site, five feet, I'll say, to the east?
Listen, I'm not asking, asking you guys to.
It's, it's not much, but it's, instead of being on the proper line, maybe you're five feet off. And if you did that, what you're abiding is a drainage system. On the, on the, I'll say, I'll just call it the east side.
All right, there's going to be another hearing here. Maybe I'll have a little better answer for you at that point.
Thank you, and thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, with that said.
Before we meet again, speaking to the architect, may, may we have architecturals before we meet the next time? In time? The, I don't have any, I have not seen them. So before we meet again, I'd like to make sure that we see, the board members see the architecturals and facades and all the other stuff we often like to see, please?
When you say faci, all right, well, so, so that's internal. We have to figure out what we have and report to Ms. Jennings and we'll, we'll correct that. But, but I do, oh, go ahead.
Um, no, believe the, um, Dr. Campbell's, you know, request, the architecturals have been submitted, we have elevations, we have floor plans, but because we can't see colors, we don't understand texture.
If you go to the next exhibit, there's, there's a color green there.
Well, we're not going to get it.
I understand, just letting you know it exists.
Scheduling you to come back. House May 16. It appears you're here already, that's one reason why. I think that for many reasons, it probably makes the best sense and it gets you heard. Finish it up. All right, members of the public, ladies and gentlemen, application number two for this evening, block 11, 901, lot 40, Lees Village LLC. That application, excuse me, is being carried to the May 16, 2022 meeting without the requirement of further notice. The applicant is way of time through May 31, 2022. That application will be first on the agenda that evening.
Public comments, we didn't close public comments?
Hey, guys, if you don't mind? We have a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, can I get a motion to close? All in favor? Now we're done.